And five, four, three, two, one.
Welcome to the Wednesday, November 29th, 2017, meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. This meeting is called to order, this meeting is being recorded and aired live by LCTV. It is also being livestreamed on longmeadow.org. It is a legal requirement for anyone else to disclose if they are recording this meeting. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do not have any correspondence for tonight, so we'll move on to the approval of minutes. Melanie?
I move that the school committee approve the minutes to the November 15th, 2017, school committee meeting as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Discussion, all those in favor, opposed, and okay. We'll move to visitor comments. Any visitor comments? Okay. And school committee announcements and recognition? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the business with guests. First, on our agenda, we have the school improvement plans. The school principals and assistant principals will present their reports on each school's 16 to 17 plans and a copy of each school's new 17 to 18 plans.
All right, well, okay. So as the gang is assembling here, I'll pull up the presentation. So we're pleased and proud tonight to present our progress on last year's school improvement plans and to give you an overview of our goals for the current school year, for the current planning cycle, which I'll explain momentarily. And as we begin, I want to thank the principals, the assistant principals, the staffs at the schools, and the school councils for their work pulling together these ambitious plans. Tonight is meant to provide you with an overview of the plans and to give you some sense of the direction that we're headed, but we couldn't possibly, in the time that we have, we couldn't possibly provide you with a comprehensive report. The comprehensive reports, the full reports are in your packet, and so we're happy to answer questions on those reports as well. So, the school improvement plans, we pride ourselves on being committed to a system of continuous improvement where we're always somewhere on that loop on the left, we're always in the midst of planning, implementing, studying our plans, and then revising our plans accordingly. It's a continual loop, a maddening loop, right? You never hit the finish line in public education, you never get to where you want to go, and but, so our plans are built on that PDSA cycle. One of the things that we've stressed is systemic alignment, ensuring that our practices are aligned across all districts. And I like the image of the gears on the right, in the sense that it suggests that the work that's happening in one school turns and energizes the work that's happening in another school. And so, the more we're aligned and the more we're in sync, we think there's ultimately better results for our kids. So, more specifically, the school improvement planning cycle, it stretches from December 1st to November 30th. So, right now, we are sort of in this, tonight, we're in that approval of the new school improvement plans, and really, it has to be this stage in the year because it's early in the year when we're assessing last year's plans and we are developing plans for the current school year. So, again, this relates to that PDSA cycle. The other reason that we have a cycle that runs from December 30th to November 30th of the next year relates to the release of MCAS results. We get the results in September and October, and so we need time to digest those plans and think about how they might inform our improvement efforts. So, here we are tonight with the approval, hopefully to seek your approval, of our new school improvement plans. The school improvement plans are generated by school councils. These are legal, public bodies that are responsible for preparing a school improvement plan. When I came on board last year, one of the things that the school committee had asked of me was to ensure that we were being faithful to the obligations and responsibilities of the school councils, and I think we've done that. The principals have done a great job of ensuring that those school councils are representative and that they have opportunities to provide input into the improvement planning process. The school improvement plans are obviously also reflective of the work of the staff in general, and I hope you'll see tonight that our plans are tightly aligned, that our goals are consistent across the district, and that our goals relate to the district improvement plan. So again, tonight, just want to give you a strategic overview, and we'll start shortly with where the principals will highlight one goal from the 16-17 school improvement plans. Again, just trying to give you a representative sample, give the public a representative sample of the work that we've been involved with. So, quick review, our district improvement goals relate to social-emotional learning, ensuring that we have supports in place to support children's social-emotional development, addressing the needs of the whole child. We're also committed to the idea of differentiation, kind of addressing or meeting children where they are, and that our instruction or assessment is reflective of their unique needs, their unique interests, and that we're giving kids multiple opportunities to demonstrate their knowledge to us. So, that's the second district improvement goal. The third relates to curriculum alignment, ensuring that curriculum and instruction and assessment is aligned vertically across the grades, K through 12, and that it's as seamless a transition as possible for kids, and that also it's horizontally aligned so that children's experiences are similar in similar grades in courses and disciplines. So, for those of you who prefer words to pictures, this in narrative form are our three district improvement goals relating to, again, social-emotional learning, differentiation, and curriculum alignment. So, we'll jump right into this, and I'd ask our newest principal to lead us off at the top of the order here, Blueberry Hill, Amy Bostian, to talk about one goal from the 16-17 school improvement plan. So, Amy.
Thank you. This has been a great process, too, aligning our language, our practices, this, these documents that you have in front of you. It's very exciting to be part of this process. So, last year, Blueberry Hill, I want to really thank former principal Marie Pratt. She was helpful in gathering some information and data in presenting this as well, and school council last year, school council this year, the staff. So, things that were accomplished, last year, they looked at a new curriculum for their social-emotional learning, and Second Steps was chosen, that was purchased by the PTO. So, spending the year unpacking that curriculum, they did some good work there. The bullying prevention lessons were a nice highlight of that program, the structured lessons that our school adjustment counselor implemented in all of the classrooms, K to five, that's happening again this year, but that was started last year. And then, through the process of looking at social-emotional learning and getting that also out there to our families, developing some training materials for lunch and recess volunteers. We did offer some trainings this year, September and October, one during the day, one at night for our families, too, just to engage them and thank them as well for, you know, coming and helping us, and arming them with the language of the Second Steps curriculum as well, how to respond to students. Where we continue to do some good work, differentiation and further exploration of the win block, I think you'll see that in all of our improvement plans for this year. As Marty suggested earlier, we're never, we're never quite happy with what we're doing, we're always looking to grow and meet the needs of all of our kids. We're going to look at increasing the workshop model in math. We've had really great success in reading and writing, and so the teachers are feeling a little more comfortable with applying that strategy, that process, that mindset to the math workshop, too. We're trying to look at co-teaching opportunities, too, and utilizing the co-teaching with the workshop model for math. And then, again, just talking about creating some common language for expectations throughout the school that we can also share with our families, so social expectations, emotional expectations, academic expectations. So, those are some things that we're going to work together this year. We have a new school climate team, we have a leadership team, and so those folks are going to be really important in helping move us forward.
So, for folks at home, or perhaps for newer members of the committee, the win block stands for the "what I need" block, and it's an opportunity to provide students with opportunities for enrichment and extension during the school day, also functions to help us avoid students being pulled from core instruction for other services and other opportunities. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that. The thought was that after the six schools provide you with some sense of the 16-17 school improvement plans, that we'd pause at that point, see if there are any questions, and then we'd go into the 17-18 plans. So, Center School is next up.
Thank you. So, I also wanted to highlight the social-emotional teaching and learning goal that we had last year in our plan. We were in year two of the Peace Builders Program, and our accomplishments helped us create and foster the kind of community we want to be at Center School. We're very proud that we implemented the program with fidelity, and what that means is that we had a month-by-month implementation where, across the school, everyone was working on the same principle. So, what that helped create was unity, common language, and we feel that the principals are being ingrained in the hearts and the minds of our students. So, we're really proud of that. What we want to continue to work on and opportunities for growth is to enhance that homeschool connection, make sure that our parents are very aware of the language we're using, so that's in our plan for the coming year, and also continuation of the integration across our school day in lots of different areas.
Quick anecdote on the integration, I remember being at Center School last year, and the students were presenting their biographies, and they were talking about how the famous figures that they were reporting on represented and embraced the ideals that are the foundation of Peace Builders. So, I thought, to me, it was a great expression of how, you know, that Peace Builders has become a real, real way of framing student's social-emotional development, and it is integrated into every nook and cranny of Center School, so it was nice to see. Wolf Swamp?
So, I'm also going to be highlighting our social-emotional learning work, and it's, as Principal Bostian said, it's important for me to note also that a lot of the work that we did last year was from Principal Guile, who was in the position before me, so I certainly thank him for giving us kind of the foundation that we built our social-emotional learning on. But last year, we continued the work, our social-emotional learning committee, we did meet 35, 34 times over the school year, which, that's outside of school time, so if you think about how much time that is from the educators, it's pretty impressive, and the work that we did really is propelling us forward this year. We did have monthly assemblies to address our CAREs, which we'll hear about a little bit more in our 2017-18 plans, which is the five core competencies of social-emotional learning. And then, the responsive classroom professional development, we were able to bring in a couple of consultants on some of our PD days, as well as embed it into some of the school days so that we were getting some real classroom feedback. Opportunities for growth, certainly, we're meeting students with varying challenges on a daily basis, and we want to make sure that we're all equipped and comfortable with supporting the whole child in everything that we do. So, that's something that we are working on this year in some of the new goals that we have set forth for the 2017-18 school year.
Looking for a good representation of how that, how the CAREs approach has been integrated into the entire school. I had a chance to go to one of the, they have Wolf Pack meetings at Wolf Swamp, they're whole school assemblies, and they're oftentimes are built around that CAREs acronym. And so, again, it's, I think kids are embracing the framework that we provided, so it's great to see. Glenbrook?
Hello. So, our accomplishments, so real quick, implementation of RTI. So, RTI is Response to Intervention. If you take a look at the triangle, it's often, we often use that to sort of show everyone how we're utilizing it. There's Tier One, which is the universal instruction, which is happening right into, right in the core classroom. Tier Two is the more targeted intervention for students who we find at risk, they get referred, if teachers are feeling that way, they get referred, and we have RTI meetings throughout, and we go ahead and refer students to get that Tier Two intervention. And Tier Three is more of a significant intensive intervention, so that's more of a, just more high-quality, intensive time, small group, one-to-one type of intervention. So, that's under our accomplishments because we were able to, in this past year, just be more consistent with implementing RTI and offering it in a way that scheduled the kids a little bit better. We moved some things around for both literacy and math, and are able now to get the kids in there three out of the six days, it gives them just more consistent with the same cohort, and we try to work with, we have different, you know, math and ELA teachers in sixth grade, we try to cohort them so they're coming from the same teacher, which kind of helps with when they're into intervention. So, we've found a way to schedule them a little bit better and get more of the kids in there. So, right now, we currently have 45 that are in math and 30 in literacy that we're working with as well. So, and then, one of our other things is the addition of our library media specialist. This past year was our first year with that at both middle schools. We shared Scott McGinley as our person, and it's made such a difference in our school as far as what he does. We were having a conversation the other day, and I was like, you're, you know, he wears a lot of hats in our building, and I'm like, if you just were to break down like what you do and, you know, what you did this past year, how would you break it down? And of course, he gives me like this perfect little like four-piece part, and basically, without reading everything to you, he broke it down into like, he's an information specialist, instructional partner, teacher, and program administrator. He does a lot for our school and for our library, and it's pretty amazing to see. So, that was a great addition to our building. Our Makerspace, that was a LEAF grant that myself and our seventh-grade science teacher, Mary Ellen Galant, put in for, and we got, and we have a space in our, in our school that we call the Makerspace, it's really where a place where kids can be innovative and create, and we have accomplished the fact that it was created and generated the use of it now. So, we, basically, it's diversified the learning experience for students. So, we've introduced, starting in January, we introduced Maker Challenges, which is like a monthly challenge, we invite kids, they have no idea what it is, we just tell them that, you know, this is the day it's going to be on, you show up at 3 o'clock in the cafeteria, and we give you all these little materials, and we tell you what your chore is, and you have to build in a certain amount of time, and then we have to measure it and see if it actually works, whatever it is. So, the kids really bought in, they love it. We've evolved now to have Maker Mondays and Tinker Tuesdays, where we do it after school, and depending on what teacher can supervise it. So, it's really been fun for the kids. Today, we had our November Challenge, and the kids made zip lines, and they raced them, and it's just really fun for them to be able to make stuff with their kids and do group activities like that, and they're really, really enjoying that. So, and then that would tie into an opportunity for growth, so with that whole Makerspace thing, it's really like a maker mindset, and Nicole and I have talked a lot about this, it's really talking about, even though we have a space in our building at Glenbrook, the maker mindset is more of like having this kind of stuff happen within the classroom. So, it's more of a mindset. Sure, we have a space, but we also don't even use that space for challenges, we're using them in the cafeteria because we have so many kids. So, it's more of like creating and implementing more opportunities for the maker mindset. We have classes that can sign out the Makerspace and go down there and do project-based stuff in that room, but we also want to be able to create more STEAM lessons with them on their content in order for them to feel more comfortable doing more of those things. So, that's an area that we want to grow in, just to provide even more opportunities for our kids to have innovative experiences. And another one is our continue to support students and staff through SEO. So, we, you know, we're really working on that within our advisories, as you guys know, we've talked about it, you know, last year as well, but we're also working on making sure it gets infused into the classroom on a daily basis. You know, advisory only happens so often, so we want to make sure that they're utilizing that. You know, we continue to see the rise in anxiety in our kids, and we're really working at, as a team and a family, to try to figure out how to better support these kids at the middle level. Developmentally, they changed so much in the middle school, and I think it really is something that we are very aware of as a staff. And, you know, we're just finishing up self-awareness, and it talks about self-care, coping skills, time management, perseverance, facing adversity, so we're just really trying to work with them, how to better support our staff and students in those areas, so.
Put in a plug for Nicole, if you have any Legos, or blocks, or glue guns, or anything like that, you're happy to accept any donations, right?
Yeah.
And it's interesting to think about the Makerspace mindset, I like, I like the way Nicole phrased that, and I think that is kind of taking root in a lot of places in the district, and even today, we heard from high school students who are involved in launching a robotics club, and very similar concept where they're really given a challenge and given some materials and have to creatively figure out how to put it all together and make it work, so I think, I think that mindset is definitely taking root in a lot of places. So, as we move to Williams, I want to publicly acknowledge and thank Assistant Principal Nicole Paris-Gro, worthy of... She has, we're so fortunate, and she has stepped up in a big way for the families of Williams, for the staff, for us. She has, you know, just hit the ground running under, under a challenging circumstance, so thank you, Nicole, we're so indebted, and along with Larry Birdy, they've made for a great transition team to set things up for Dr. Guile, who is also with us tonight, so we're happy to have him as well. So, Williams' report from last year.
Okay, so, some of our, so, hi, everyone. So, the goal that I decided to focus on was our technology. We are, just have a wealth of technology available to our students throughout the day in various settings. So, our accomplishments, for example, are our Google Classroom. So, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the Google platform, but Google Classroom, it offers the, offers the students a virtual classroom experience. So, when they're not in class, they're able to revisit or review materials, videos, it's sort of a flip-the-classroom kind of mindset. It offers differentiation. For example, if a teacher's working on a concept, and there are kids at various places, they're, the teacher's able to differentiate by either creating various classrooms within the classroom, or various places for students to go to gather or practice skills and resources. It's a great place for communication. The teachers get to share assignments, and videos, and texts, but also provides the students an opportunity to post and ask questions, and get real-time feedback from their peers, from their teacher. And the engagement, students are engaged by technology, and Google Classroom can help students become and stay engaged in the learning process. And some of our students are a little bit more tech-savvy maybe than others, it also gives opportunities for those students to be a peer tutor, or a model of how to sort of make their way through the various technological pieces of Google Classroom and kind of support one another. Another really cool thing that we're excited about is our integration of new student devices, laptops, Chromebooks, iPads. Williams is to the point where we could probably offer, we could offer, a device per student. We have enough devices, technology available, that every student could have access to a piece of technology when they need it. And so, that is exciting, very exciting. We have Chromebook carts that are available per grade level, so each grade level teacher's could sign out a Chromebook cart and have them available in their classrooms. We have one that's designated to the library, so when students have opportunities to be in the library and they need to, either before school, after school, or throughout the school day, and they want to revisit an assignment, or they want to have an opportunity to collaborate, or check on feedback from a teacher for a piece of writing, they're able to do that. We have a cart also available with our interventionists. So, our Lit Lab and Math Lab interventionists have a cart available to them for when they want to do assessments, or when they want to provide an opportunity to differentiate, or if they want the students to do an I project, or work on something skill-based. So, it really encourages students' creativity, encourages their active learning, encourages individual learning and growth, and facilitates peer collaboration, so we're really lucky to have that. Another integration that we're excited about is code.org, along with our new technology standards. So, this past summer, from Glenbrook, our computer technology, sorry, teacher from Glenbrook and Williams, they had an opportunity, so Lori and Anne-Marie had an opportunity to spend a week in Philadelphia this summer with code.org, getting up to speed on the new middle school program they have. And so, it just so happens, our technology standards really aligned nicely with what code.org was trying to do. So, Lori and Anne-Marie were able to implement that, and really, I think they've done incredible things with it. Spend a lot of time allowing the students to just be hands-on, interactive, learning how to code, using JavaScript and HTML, and codes to draw and write and create, which is just, was amazing to see. They look like they're just lines in squiggles, but they're actually the brain behind what the kids wanted the computers to do. That was wonderful to see. Both teachers have really implemented it in seventh and eighth grade, and they are introducing it in sixth grade. So, the sixth graders, I believe at both schools, worked on creating websites. It was wonderful. What else? NearPod, this is really cool, too. So, NearPod is another piece of technology that offers an opportunity for teachers to differentiate, you know, just really offer some of our students that learn differently, our hands-on learners, our visual learners. This is an opportunity for teachers to create and download interactive multimedia presentations, interactive lessons, assessments with class, and control the student's involvement in real time. We have, at Williams, we have 50 teacher licenses, and Will Sullivan, our eighth-grade history teacher, is a certified NearPod educator, and we have 13 virtual reality headsets, which, I don't know if you guys remember these, but the Viewmasters, do you guys remember? This is way cooler than that. This, I'm sorry, it's really kind of geeking out a little. So, you put these headset, you put this headset on, which I'm not going to do, well, I will.
I wish you would.
I'll show you. It's a long day, I tell you.
I'll hold the box.
So, I won't put it on. So, your phone, for example, would go here, and you'd put this on, and it would, like you're in the Grand Canyon, like you're in China, like you're under the sea, you know, having an oceanography experience, it's a virtual field trip, it's like you're there. So, I've had many opportunities to be in Will's class to see the kids in Gettysburg, you know. I was in sixth grade in Mrs. Rainey's class, learning about the ecosystem, and in eighth grade science, where they were reviewing chemistry concepts. So, it really just takes on a whole new approach of hands-on learning, and for our visual learners, who just can't sit and hear it, they have to see it and feel it and touch it, it's just an awesome tool for differentiation. And Will wants to offer licenses, he's going to contact the principals and offer, you know, to share some of our licenses with the elementary schools if they're interested in the high school. We have one license at one of the elementary schools, and one license at the high school. So, this is just, and you can take polls, quizzes, slideshows, activities, I have a little video at the bottom there, and you can kind of just see what the kids were doing in Will's class. This is somebody using their phone, and this is the worksheet that they were using, the poll of a question that was being asked, slideshow, questions, and they get to choose which one of those answers, and, and they all walk in, and all these kids have their phones out, or they have laptops, and they're interactive, engaging, and holding each other accountable. So, when they get one wrong, they're like, oh, you know, it kind of affects everybody. Some opportunities for growth, more flexible project and collaborative-based learning approaches. So, these are a couple of the things, but we would love to see more of that, more opportunities for that, for... for that, for teachers and students to be more comfortable with taking risks, as far as that goes. And the use of technology in a way that doesn't replace knowledge but reinforces it. So for our students not to be so quick to just Google the answer to something, but really be thoughtful about how to research it and gain that background knowledge to best reply to a question or provide a comment.
Thank you. Next up, the high school, Mr. Lenders.
Good evening, everyone. So, LHS has a long tradition of trying to be supportive of our students, to understand that we go the extra mile and to look at unique situations. But I would say, five or six years ago, it became very evident to our faculty that anxiety was on the rise, depression was on the rise. It was undeniable. We were hearing it from our social worker. At the time, we were hearing it from our guidance counselors, we were hearing it from our classroom teachers. So we started that conversation and over the past few years, we have been purposefully focusing on supporting students in a better way, in a more in-depth way, and talking about what SEL should look like at the high school level. Everyone has mentioned that you cannot have a school improvement plan in 2017 without addressing social-emotional learning. But what is that and what should that look like at the high school level? So our pre-referral team, made up of guidance counselors and administrators, and Shelley Warren, our substance abuse counselor, and Jen Lynch, our special education supervisor and our school nurse, and our two social workers now. We greatly appreciate having two social workers. That has certainly helped in SEL implementation. But we meet weekly and we really formed the crux of dialogue and discussion there. Those people are on the front line of what students are dealing with. So last year was, again, not the first year that we focused on this, but it was the, it was certainly a year where we formally did more than we had ever done before. And students were more formally and purposely exposed to lessons, information, guest speakers, formal curriculum, et cetera, on a variety of issues. Anxiety, depression, substance use, abuse, conflict resolution, bullying, harassment, relaxation techniques, safe dating, sexual harassment, sexual assault, et cetera. So it's important work and we dedicated ourselves to it. It is in our school improvement plan this year, it will be in our school improvement plan next year. It's something that you have to keep working on. But it was a success. We certainly, we dedicated, we dedicated now some PD for the last few years regarding this. And two quick examples are, we have LHS Student Voices, where peer leaders, excuse me, peer leadership students come in and will lead different exercises about what it's like to walk the halls and experience LHS through student eyes. It's really good, it's really powerful, and it's really eye-opening. Because we have to remind ourselves that we are teaching math, we are teaching history, we're teaching science, but we're teaching children. So, so that was some of the PD that we engage in. We've done that, we've kind of alternated that, but we engaged in that last year. And also, we had a faculty panel last year made up of our advisor for Gay-Straight Alliance, Doc Howard, our Metco Coordinator, Sandy McDonald, and our school nurse, and all of our counselors, and John Devine, our social worker at the time, and other people who create really respectful classrooms. And they shared real stories without the attached names for our faculty. And we had some honest and good dialogue about the real issues that LHS kids are facing when they're not in your science classroom, when they're not in your history classroom, but when they're in the guidance officer, the social workers' office, or working with the substance abuse counselor. Shelley Warren was on that panel as well. So it was, it's an important goal that we committed to and we think that it was a success, but you have to keep going. So quickly, social norming. We had a new school four and a half years ago and we had a big learning curve. You know, everything from the logistics of the building, even though it's beautiful and new and state-of-the-art, it was a big learning curve. And one of that was, we had a dozen television monitors around the building that we didn't really use effectively for the first two years. Our IT department actually kept it down here until the spring, kept control of it down here until the spring of 16. And thanks to Nick George, he gave us more freedom in the 16, 17 school year, and we said, what do we do with these monitors? So there's an opportunity there. I was chatting with Shelley Warren and I said, was telling her about a grant that we had applied for years ago and we didn't get. And it was very similar to posters around the building and you'd try to educate students and you'd say, you know, students think that this is happening, but this is happening. And she said, oh, you want to do social norming? I said, sure, I guess if that's what it's called. So last year was our first formal year. It's in its infancy stage. To be fair, we're going to expand that this year. But it's a combination of kind of PSAs, public service announcements, educating students, coupled with a true social norming example, which would be an opportunity to change perception. We were chatting about this today in admin meeting, but it's, to put a statistic in front of a student and say, a recent survey said, of LHS students, said that the perception is that X amount drank alcohol on a weekend. Having said, and underneath that, you say, however, on the same recent survey, only certain percentage said that they engage in alcohol use on a weekend. So you're trying to challenge the perception and in the process, educate students and encourage them to make more healthy decisions. So that's in its infancy stage. We certainly are going to try to expand that.
With the Drug Free Community Grant, that social norming campaign, we have the option, the potential to extend it beyond Long Meadow High School and into the community. And so that's an exciting opportunity. Paul McNeil, the Drug Free Community Coordinator, who you'll meet shortly, has some experience in this. And you can engage families, you can engage local businesses in these social norms campaigns to kind of, again, dispel the notion that everybody is out there drinking and smoking when in fact, most kids aren't. And that dispelling that is important work, so. So that is a little glimpse of what happened in the last school improvement planning cycle. Worth pausing there. We've been talking a lot. School committee questions, comments, concerns, anything before we move to the next planning cycle?
Are those our actual numbers or just random?
No, those are. I'm assuming it's not us. Sue Bertrand, help me find, help me find some, some clips off of the internet. But that's an example of what it would look like.
Yeah, okay.
Panthers.
Anyone else have any questions? Great job, thank you very much.
All right.
It's great.
Keep going.
I would mention the BHS Wistery, that book that he chose for the kids, that's an awesome book. So everybody should read that at that age because it teaches them a lot of very valuable lessons. Things my kids didn't even understand. They're like, what? Why would you do that to somebody? So the whole, the meaning behind the book is very good.
And before we get to the next, this year's plans, I want to also acknowledge and thank Tech Director Nick George, Group Services Director Gene Fontaine. So much of what the principals have talked about have been supported by their work. You know, Gene helping us understand how to put behavioral supports in place for kids and many other things. Nick obviously played a huge role in helping us integrate the technology that the school committee has supported us with. So thank you to Nick and Gene and thanks for coming out. So the way we wanted to handle the next part of this presentation is to, at each level, talk a little bit about the goals that you see in the full reports that are in your packet. We'll try to move quickly through the remaining slides. But you'll see that the individual school improvement plans are all lined up with the district goal relating to social-emotional learning. Here, I wanted to start with the middle schools to help us understand a framework that feels comfortable for all of us in terms of the social-emotional learning work and supports that we have in place. So Nicole in Nicole, Glenbrook and Williams.
So CASL, which you'll see at the bottom, it's the copyright, is, it stands for the Collaborative for Academic Social-Emotional Learning. And CASL's SEL framework identifies five core competencies that, in their words, educate hearts, inspire minds, and help people navigate the world more effectively. So this is what you're seeing up there and this is sort of what, you know, we've incorporated and, you know, parents have seen this as well. And then when you flip it, I have a copy for everyone if you guys want one as well, is when you flip it, it kind of goes through each competency, it gives you the definition, and then it goes through a bunch of different things that you focus on for certain ones, like for self-awareness, identifying emotions, accurate self-perception, recognizing strengths, self-confidence and self-efficacy. So those, in the area of that, especially through our advisory, those are the kind, the activities are focused on those areas underneath each one. So we kind of are rotating, this wheel is kind of guiding us to rotate through our advisory and to infuse it into the classroom, all the different things that we're doing. The link that's on there right now, if you clicked on it, it would bring you to the DESI page where it talks about social-emotional learning in Massachusetts and how it's one of their five strategic priorities as a department. And, I mean, you can click on it for more info, but it talks about specifically how its partnership with this framework, so that you guys can see that we're aligned with that.
And we're not just looking to have this in our advisories, two out of a six-day rotation. We're looking to make this a culture, embed it within the community of our schools, our schools, having students feel like they have a voice, that they are part of something bigger than just themselves, that they have opportunities to take what they've learned through the guidance of CASL's five competencies and our support and guidance, and take that out into the community and give back in some way. So at the end of each trimester, I think, or at the end of the year, we offer opportunities for students to participate in community projects. Trying to implement that at the end of each sort of competency and tie it into something that is relevant to what's going on in the world, going on in Long Meadow, going on in another country, whatever it is. And the kids are excited about it. It's meaningful to them by providing them opportunities to make connections beyond just themselves and their classrooms.
And a big part of it is the parent communication. So we talked about advisory last year at one point, for somebody that are on it, we talked about, you know, website and the activities that we have and the things that we were doing. And a question came out was, we would love to know that as parents, what's going on because we would love to know what you're teaching in the school as far as these kind of things because we'd like to reinforce it at home. So we took that and now are providing parent communication home every time we switch to a different competency so that parents can kind of follow through. So we sent one out on self-awareness and we're about to send one out Friday because we start on Monday, our self-management. So you'll get a little thing. It brings you to the CASL website so you guys can get more tools, there's books, there's recommendations. And we tried to offer one article that talks to that on how you guys can continue to work at home. So that's a big part of this as well, is the homes and communities, is being able to keep that line of communication open. And yet, the kids are definitely buying in. And what we try to do as well is survey the kids to see like, what activities did you find beneficial? What activities did you like? Because, you know, there's different advisors, different approaches to it. So we want to get the kids' feedback on what they enjoyed as far as like, activities go. Because some of these topics aren't easy to talk about with the 13 kids that you have in that class, but. And also too, another part of the DESI thing is CASL's really working on, they have a working group that's working on, there's a three-year goal on assessments, on trying to, on helping teachers use that data and how to assess these different competencies as well. So we have a better, we have more data on how it's working, so.
Plenty of research, obviously, that demonstrates that. Students who have, who are skilled in these areas also achieve academically. So, you know, this isn't, I like the way Nicole Paris-Gro said it, this is nothing, this is something that we don't want to just segregate and do as a separate part of the day. We wanted to integrate it into every, every class, every opportunity, lunch, recess, everything. So they've done, the middle schools have made, just this year alone, they've made great strides in terms of aligning their practices in this area. And I really appreciate the purposeful work in that area.
And just a quick question. Where are, I'm assuming you're communicating with parents through email or is it, and is it up on the website in case they missed it or?
So our messengers. What I can do is I could, we could totally put that up for the people that didn't get it. So yeah, we send it out via messenger every time we do a new competency. So we could totally make a separate link to that.
Just in case one day they need reference and they can't find the email or something like that, it might be.
That's totally fair, yeah. We could do that. And these are here too. I can leave for you guys, you can see what we're doing.
So I mentioned this CASL framework seems to be comfortable for all of our schools and seems to, as we studied the framework, although we haven't done a deep dive, we're starting to realize that all of our social-emotional learning approaches line up nicely with this CASL framework. And so we thought this would be an opportunity to demonstrate that while we talk about the elementary social-emotional learning goals. So Wolf Swamp, Blueberry and Center.
Sure. So I think I'll build upon what both Nicole said in that we are, this is, all of our programs are embedded in everyday life in the elementary school. And we're truly building the infrastructure of social-emotional learning within each of our, the competencies of social-emotional learning. And we broke it down so that you can actually see how each school is addressing the competencies set forth by CASL. But as you look at that deeper and you look through our school improvement plans, you're seeing that community service is really becoming a big focus of all three of our schools and really transferring that to our students and putting that responsibility on them to become part of our communities and serving others. You're seeing that all of our schools are doing the assemblies and we feel that, the importance of gathering the students to kind of honor and celebrate competencies that we're working on and celebrate the community service projects that are associated with some of the assemblies and embedded within that. We're finding ways to communicate the information, as Michelle, you just asked. So one of the ways that Wolf Swamp did it last year was in our, one of our CIP goals was a social-emotional newsletter. Last year, it went out twice to all families. This year, it's in our goal to have three. So it's set, ready to go, folded already for the report card envelopes next Friday. So each family of the Wolf Swamp community will get that electronically as well as a hard copy in the report cards next Friday. Just a way that we can celebrate and share and communicate, as Donna was saying, and part of her goal is, you know, to make sure that home-school communication is happening and that families are aware of all of the work that is being done with their children every day to celebrate all of the ways that we're supporting them at school. So I could certainly read through each one of these, but I think the chart really lays it out that all of our schools are addressing those five core competencies of social-emotional learning.
Anything else? Good, thank you. Questions? Or move? All right. High school? Again, as Tom said, this has been an ongoing effort of the high school and it remains a part, an important component in their school improvement plan.
Right. This is pretty self-explanatory, but it lists the identified domain. We have others up there, resiliency, for instance, is something we're stopping and pausing and talking about with students. But those are the, those, that is a focus, like I said, it's going to be a focus this year, it's going to be a focus next year. I guess I just want to say, I just want to give proper credit to our PE and our health department. It's my 13th year at Long Meadow High School. It's amazing that nine years ago, there wasn't even a health class at Long Meadow High School. I think there was years ago and then it disappeared, but we didn't even have a health program. We got Megan Roy and she is our health program and does an amazing job. But in conjunction with the PE department, Rita Hocker, the department chair, they have taken on so much beyond the traditional stereotypical curriculum that we associate with PE. When I think of PE in the 1980s, relative to what goes on at Long Meadow High School now, they're a completely different species. So I just want to acknowledge that. We're, actually, we're going to come, Long Meadow High comes in front of you in January or early February and we bring you our Ed Ops book, our Student Choices, Academic Choices book. And one of the things that we're going to update you on is that we want to change the name of the PE and Health Department to the Wellness Department because it's more honest, it's more indicative, it's more descriptive of what they do. So these are all done in different ways, but certainly through curriculum, formal curriculum, through formal and planned guest speaker series. Just to give you an idea, every single PE class in every single PE class in 10, 11, and 12, we, we address it in health, in ninth grade and 10th, 11th, and 12th, we have a different program where social workers go in, they talk about certain issues, at least one special program for substance abuse, we're partnering with, when you, to work with pharmacy students who are going to come in and talk to 10th graders about opiates and about dangers of that. 11th and 12th grade, it's through the sheriff's department, and they come in, you meet people, and they tell their life story. And many things are happening on many levels, but I just want to give sort of proper credit and insight to you guys as to what is happening and how much, how important the PE and health department plays in the, in the rollout of this. And the last bullet just has to do, it says, "The continued commitment to the Guidance Counselors meeting every student, every year." And again, that may not seem radical, but until a few years ago, that did not happen. We would meet with 10th and 12th graders, and 9th graders and 11th graders can slip through the cracks, and that's a really important part of making sure that you're having purposeful eyes on every single child, every single year. Now, some of, some children will see Guidance Counselors 17, 25 times, but there are students who we knew would avoid the guidance department, and it's a big part of it. It's, it's in conjunction with other things, with our, with our eighth grade to ninth grade transition that we've been working with the middle school on, in conjunction with the 9th grade assemblies, we stop, we pause about a month into school, and we say, "How are things going?", and we check in with them. We have 12th grade specified assemblies as they start to transition to college, so we not only talk about the realities of dorm life, seniors got it last year, we're going to do it this spring, but we talked, had honest dialogue about sexual assault education, things that we need to address and we need to be honest about, because the colleges will not talk about that, because they're trying to sell themselves. So it's our job, it's our responsibility to have those dialogues, and again, all of that is part of our social-emotional approach, and we're committed to continuing it this year.
Thank you, Tom. Second, district goal relates to differentiation of curriculum instruction and assessment, and leading us off here are the elementary schools.
So we want students at all levels of knowledge and skills to make continuous progress, and so the elementary goals in this area are focused on our instructional model, which is the workshop model, and the workshop model is, is a perfect instructional model for differentiating both instruction and curriculum, because it allows a teacher to tailor instruction to meet individual needs. Our intervention model, the RTI, also allows us to ensure that all students receive the supports they need to be successful learners. So across all three schools, we're going to be working in different ways on both of these models, both the instruction and the interventional, intervention model. We're very excited about the embedded PD opportunities we have going this year, both with Mike Flynn in math, which is going to be in a lesson-study format, and also the ongoing professional development we have through our literacy coaches. And I can't say enough about the work, I think all three of us are in awe of the work our teachers do to differentiate curriculum for the students. I mean, it's not just one subject area, they're doing math, they're doing reading, they're doing writing, they're doing social studies, they're doing science, and it's time-intensive, and, and it's ongoing work, and we're just really proud of, of where they're at right now, where all three schools are at, so.
Thanks so much. Come back if there are questions. At the middle school, again, some consistent goals relating to differentiation across both schools, Nicole and Nicole.
Hey. So at the middle school level, we have a new universal screener. So we used in the past AIMS Web, and I think the elementary schools may still be using that. We have implemented, we've started to use STAR, which is a common assessment to monitor progress for intervention and enrichment in both math and ELA. So at the beginning of the school year, students would take the STAR assessment, and that would give us a baseline of students' reading performance and math performance, and set a stage for continuous improvement. And then again, about mid-year, and then throughout, we would measure students' progress and pivot instruction as needed to ensure students are developing the skills needed to be proficient in reading and math. And then at the end of the year, they would take another assessment where we'd measure proficiency and celebrate students' mastery of literacy and math, state literacy and math standards. The universal screener is also used to help guide our RTI process. So if we have students that may not have met, met the state standards or approaching standards, we would possibly bring them up to RTI, and this helps us kind of guide that RTI process.
Our second one is to provide a variety of non-academic supports for students and staff to improve task behavior and focus learning, so that's when our sta, so at the end of the year last year, we were lucky enough to have the district provide a number of different movement tools for the classroom, as well as some of our own school funds we were using for stand-up desks, desk cycles, exercise bands, wiggle cushions, ball chairs, and fidget bars. And we did some PD time with that, and the teachers, really, if you walk through all of our classrooms, there's, the stand-up desks are always being utilized, the kids love to be in them, they love the fidget bars if they're just standing, so we're, we're offering more of that stuff to kind of keep the kids on task and focused. We also have Refocus and Recharge, which is a book that offers, I think it's 55 brain breaks for the classroom, and a lot of times we do them with our staff, so they can see how quick and easy they are, literally, you need sometimes two minutes to do something that gets the kids back to like, being where they need to be. So that's, that's another option, and GoDoodle, which is another option for brain breaks as well, so they offer a lot of that for kids to have breaks. I know the R-word, recess, no, I know we're not going to talk about that right now, but that's another outlet to, to, for kids to have. So we're trying to implement little things throughout to give those kids that moment to, you know, just kind of get back on track and take a breath, and take a breath. So we're really working on that as well.
And finally, utilizing technology across the curriculum to promote blended learning and providing individualized instruction for all students. So blending face-to-face with tech-based digital instruction, allowing some element of student control over time, pace, path, opportunities for students to get what they need, when they need it, and then to provide us with data that can inform our instruction moving forward through iReady, or through iExcel, or through Common Lit, or Google-created questions, or forms, things like that, so that's what's going on.
Thanks so much, and then at the high school?
So our approach to making, making sure we differentiate and provide good education really focuses around what good teaching looks like, so I had mentioned pacing, rigor, differentiation, effective assessment, what does a good assessment look like, what is authentic assessment, lesson plan sharing, meaningful feedback for students, and it's a teacher sharing. So again, the term professional learning community is out there, it's so innocuous, it kind of means different things, and LHS, it means most of our PD around what good teaching looks like is delivered by LHS teachers for LHS teachers. So it's been, that's, that's been part of the culture of LHS for years, but that is the crux of how we make sure that we're meeting students' needs. I mentioned up there, other ways, certainly, teachers are available for extra help, their posted hours, and that is really the preferred way for students. Having said that, there's a lot of research on peer-to-peer tutoring that's helpful. There is, there is growth that's needed in this area, we still, we still have a stigma that, that some kids don't want to go and be tutored at school by other students, so we're working on that. We moved last year it out of just the library media center into the cafeteria, we have some ice blocks where kids can hide in broad daylight and get, students are working together, collaboratively there anyway during certain times of the day, but that's good, it's, our NHS students run that, they do a great job, and you really see the need and the demand for it right now, right after first quarter, there's a huge call for help and tutoring from students and parents, so that's in full gear. We've worked hard on our improvement from 8th grade to 9th grade, I would refer that as structured differentiation. We have, we have three levels of classes, we've worked really hard to educate the consumer, the parent, and the, and the student, we've worked with our middle school administrators, teachers, and guidance counselors, they've done a great job. They, relative to three years ago, it's such an improved process, we want to set students up for success, and we give them the final say. We educate, we make a recommendation, we say the curriculum is going to be delivered, the curriculum that you're being exposed to is the same, but we're going to do it in different pacing and depending on your need, and again, we're trying to set students up for success. And another example is just enhanced expansion of the co-teaching model. So if you went back a few years, we really had just an ELA co-taught, we now have ELA class, we have a science class, it's co-taught by regular education teacher and special education teacher, we have social studies class, we're going to have another one next year, so that's another example of a way we're trying to differentiate.
Jean Fontaine, who's our Director of People's Services, has talked to us increasingly about this co-teaching model and as a way to promote inclusivity, as a way to promote collaboration between regular education and special education teachers. So there's some exemplary arrangements at the high school that I think we can all learn from, so I'm happy to see that Tom highlighted that. The third district goal, as we talked about, relates to curriculum alignment, and I think it's, Amy is going to talk to us about what's happening at the elementary level across all three schools.
So the push for curriculum alignment is, is so that all of our students have a similar academic experience, socially, also social experience, as they head off to the middle school, later on to high school, and then into the college and career fields. So professional development, collaboration embedded PD, we are in the throes of that right now, Principal Hutton mentioned that already, with our readers and writers workshop, as well as our math workshop. So we have teachers engaging with other teachers and our coaches on lesson design, designing text sets at, at different levels, continuing also to align our units of study both for reading and writing, so that's, that's some really exciting work. Donna also mentioned our work with Mike Flynn, so he comes to us through funding through the district, so that's, that's a great investment. He's from Mount Holyoke, and so our teachers are working closely with him. We're also very committed to enhancing our, our transition planning with the middle schools, so looking from that fifth to sixth grade, making sure that teachers are talking about the expectations that we have for them in fifth grade and what that looks like in sixth grade, so creating more opportunities for, for teachers to do that. Looking at our standards-based report card right now, we are in the piloting stage of that, but that has been some work that the district has been engaged in for many years prior to, to my coming, certainly, but really aligning the way that we assess our students with the way that we teach our students. So that has, has been some, some really thoughtful, thoughtful work. Also looking at even our, our assessments, and our assessments aligned to the standards, and how do we then report that out to, to our families? And then supporting families with at-home opportunities for building reading and writing skills and mathematics, math fluency skills, that are also aligned with our new guiding principles for homework. So those, we've had some opportunities to have some really nice conversations with our teachers, with our students, with each other, and with families about what that looks like at home, and, and that's, that's new work this year, based on work that was done last year, so just putting those conversations, having those conversations with, with one another. So that's been exciting work that we will continue, continue to do.
Thank you so much. And at the middle level, again, some goals that exist across both of our middle schools relating to curriculum alignment.
So I know that Amy just spoke to that, but the, we as well, vertical alignment with the elementary, the high school, as well as within our own building, just to successfully transition students, so we want to have consistent learning experience across the buildings and grade levels, so the discussion of the current 6th and 9th graders' placement and successes, which, you know, we are doing some work with the high school, we're working on it with the elementary, and, you know, being the middle is always so difficult, we want to make sure that we're really doing it in alignment with both schools, and then the discussion on how well 5th and 8th grade scores are and the alignment of placement and success. So a couple of things we want to do is give some release time to the teachers, so we're offering time for the, within our own schools, so the teachers to get together during different times, as well as across buildings, so to provide that time for teachers to be able to get together within our schools and across the buildings, and I think the other one was, oh, to visit the elementary and the high school, so provide time for them to visit and actually get into the classrooms of the elementary, get into the classrooms of the high school, and vice versa, so that we can actually see what each other's doing in the classrooms, and be able to support that and understand it better at the different levels.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, yeah. No, certainly the, the, the science curriculum, that's something that you'll hear more about, and I think it'll have to be a factor in the FY19 budget, so.
And implementation, well, opportunities for all students in alignment with the 21st Century College and Career readiness standard, standards, what that looks like at the school level, social-emotional learning opportunities, code.org, Explore Day, as we explain in more detail in the packet that you have, advisory, community-based project opportunities, and advisory itself. These are all opportunities for students to practice, develop, implement opportunities as they're preparing for life beyond school.
And then finally, oh, something else, are we good? Yeah. We'll move it along. So at the, at the, finally at the high school, relating to curriculum alignment, certainly the, the department structure at the high school and the leadership of the department chairs has helped us in this area, and Tom does a great job coordinating their work, so.
So we're, we're trying to align curriculum in two directions, one where, as we've said before, as Nicole said, we've been working with middle schools to make sure that the transition is better, that the alignment is better. November 9th, PD, half the day was spent between the middle school and the high school teachers getting together and sharing information and analyzing. I just want to give an example of the great work that the English teachers at both middle schools and the high school did, risk-taking. They get together, not only did they get together and share examples of lessons and curriculum and work that is, would be expected at the various levels at the high school, but they, they brought in, you know, 16 current 9th graders who came in on their day off to sit with the teachers. That's not easy work, it's not easy work. You're putting yourself out, exposing yourself, and they did a great job, and that kind of work exemplifies what we're trying to accomplish, what we've been working hard on for the last few years at the middle school level. So that's, that's one aspect, one effort in curriculum alignment, and Atlas, that you see the icon there for, is our software. We were required, when we went through NEASC accreditation, five years ago, five and a half years ago, to make sure that we mapped our curriculum. So it came out of that, but we continue to use that, and we spent some PD time, the other half of November 9 was to go back in, but every single class at Long Meadow High School has a skeletal outline of what is taught, when it is taught, and it's connected to curriculum information, standards, and framework information, and also a calendar. And it's a huge improvement from the randomness, quite frankly, that existed, you know, certainly more than 10 years ago, but even the, the efforts and the improvement that we've made. Long Meadow High School has been an amazing high school, and LPS is an amazing school system, and has been so for years, but you could have a really different experience if you landed on one teacher versus if you landed on another teacher, and that's not fair. So we, we've heard that a lot from parents over the years, and that's what really Atlas helps us to resolve, and that, and in conjunction with the fact that we have mid, common mid-year exams and common mid-year finals, or common mid-year exams and kind of common final exams. You can get there different ways, but you have to get to the same place. We certainly don't expect or want every single teacher to be on the same page every single day, we acknowledge and respect academic freedom and personality, and you stop and smell the roses a little bit if there's an interest among students, but you have to get to the same endpoint, and we've made lots and lots of progress, and it's the common exams and Atlas that has allowed us to do that.
So that's maybe a little longer than we anticipated, but I think it reflects the pride, the effort, the number of balls that we have in the air. the effort, um, the number of balls that we have in the air. And, uh, so hopefully, again, you see, uh, that we've, we've tried to align our efforts. We've tried to coordinate our efforts and that there is, uh, kind of a, a big picture that emerges from all the individual school improvement plans. So we would love your feedback, your comments, your questions at this time, if you have any.
I'll start off. Um, just thank you so much across the board. Particularly for me, I was really thrilled and excited to hear about SEL and how we're tackling it from the elementary level all the way up to the high school. I think for me, I know several of us went to the, um, MAS, NASC, get my acronyms right, conference, and SEL was such a hot topic and at the forefront across many, many districts. And it was great for us to know that we, the superintendent's goals, our school committee goals, and your goals, they all are aligning in terms of SEL. Um, and I don't know for me in particular, because I have a high school senior and junior and I've been on many, many, many college tours, but I keep hearing over and over on college tours, care of the whole person, knowledge of the whole person. So when Nicole started talking about, and then the elementary school started talking about, um, community service and building on that, it's so great to hear that our kids in Long Meadow are going to have an opportunity to be doing this in the younger grades through middle school, through high school. So when they do get to college, that's not foreign to them. They're going to be able to say, hey, you know, this is part of our culture, part of what we've been doing in school, which thrills me. So not just the, dealing with the intelligence of the head, but like that foundation of emotional intelligence and how you are all, um, putting that in your plan and in your goals. It's, it's good to see just creating this idea, I think of like a global citizen once with these kids leave our district. And I think parents should be really, um, encouraged by that and thrilled that we have a system and educators that are taking that on. So kudos to you.
Thank you.
Ricky?
Oh, Mr. Landers, I really like the idea of like the teachers collaborating so that like the courses are same for, if you take the same class. Because like I, in my experience, I've seen that like the same class, thereby like two different teachers, most often the workload is kind of different. Like the curriculum itself is like pretty much the same. Like some, some teachers make it like harder and some teachers make it easier. And, uh, I think that's a good achievement.
It's an important, it's an important goal. And, and again, look, we don't want everybody to be a mirror of each other, but it should be commensurate. It should be an equal experience, even if, I won't, I won't mention teachers' names, but even if teacher X and teacher Y have different personalities and different senses of humor and they spend a little time here, the general rigor, the general pacing and, and the end, uh, result needs to be commensurate. So we have come a long way, but we have, we, that's why it's on our school improvement plan. We have to, we have more work to do. Good point.
Thank you. So as you said, that every year, every kid sees a guidance counselor. It seems like a small point, but I actually think that's really important. I completely agree with that concept and that goal because there's a lot of kids out there and I would have been one of them that would never reach out to somebody, but you might have something to say if they pull you in. So I think it's a perfect, um, thing to do at the high school level, maybe all levels, really. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention, though, I've had this question at PTO meetings a few times, more than once, about the homework issue. So with the curriculum alignment, one thing we also want to look at is the homework change we made at the elementary level. When we get to middle school, some parents are worried that, you know, that they're going to go from nothing, which isn't the case, that's not really the policy, but to sixth grade and they're going to be overloaded. And so far, my experience, Nicole, you'll be glad to hear this, but the, the homework level at sixth grade seems to be reasonable. Fifth grade was actually a lot more than that, um, in our experience. So I think now maybe at the fifth grade is lowered a little bit. It may actually correspond with that sixth grade better, hopefully. Uh, but that's something I think all of us would probably like you to really look at is, what does that look like? Do you, do the kids feel like next year when they get to sixth grade, they're overwhelmed by the amount of homework? Um, so I think that's something to probably keep in mind also.
Stefan?
Just to piggyback on that, once a year guidance counselor at the high school, I think it's also great. And I also might add, in thinking about it going forward and in other years, is the possibility of throwing an email to the parent prior to that meeting with the guidance counselor with the students, so that they could just say, yeah, I've noticed a lot of anxiety or I'm a little concerned, just like a quick look that that guidance counselor would then have going in with that student. And it would also give you some insight into how that transitioned from eighth grade or ninth grade, ninth grade to tenth grade is going for that. Um, just a little more information for the guidance counselor to have when they meet with the student. Cause I did just see that email go out to every, all the ninth graders and they're going to have that, that meeting.
So December is the meeting. I don't know if we, I don't know if I'm going to, are you asking me, like, is, was it good? Is that good information? Or do you mean you want an individual?
I just think, um, in thinking about it, you know, not necessarily this year, but I think the information that that would provide for the guidance counselor would be helpful and it also gives the parent a chance to say, you know what, this has been a little bit tough for, you know, because it's not to the level that the parent may reach out to the guidance counselor, but it would give them some information before they meet with that student.
We could, right, at first, I was nervous there for a second, wondering if you're asking them to send out two hundred and fifty emails, but we could, we could improve the email we send out and say, I mean, generally told you, hopefully, that, um, the ninth grade meetings, individual meetings were going to happen in the month of December. And, um, we could certainly say, you know, add to that and say, if you have concerns, worries, et cetera, please email and, and make it easy, make it user-friendly and list the guidance counselor's email right there. Even though people know it, it's good to be really mindful of it's, it's more user-friendly. We could certainly do that.
Yeah, I think something as simple as that, um, would give them more information. And I'd just use this time to plug a little bit of what I'm looking for in the future too, is that data after the students graduate that we don't really have. And so when we talk about SEL and, and all of this and how we're preparing students for college and careers after, we don't really have any data to show us whether we're succeeding. And so aside from college acceptance and then some anecdotal stories. So I'm really looking for that in the future to get some, figure out a way to get that data, um, ideally five years out.
Yeah, it's, it's, we have to do something for NEASC. If, we have to get something going. It's hard because we don't have their emails anymore. We, we eradicate their, we send them warning emails and, you know, your, your Long Meadow account is going to disappear. I mean, Nick has been good to us and he has let it go a, a few more weeks as we say, you know, grab your stuff, grab your information, but that is a challenge. I mean, our students do very well, but we have to come up with a way to document that and capture that. Um, so one way that we're working on, and again, to be fair, this is, this is because NEASC is, is requiring us to think about what we do is, is we're creating a survey right now. I'm doing it with the guidance department to try to reach out and gather some data about how well were you prepared in reading and writing? How well were you prepared in mathematics and problem solving, how STEM, et cetera? Um, and some, some questions about how did you transition? How was the first year? Um, and we're talking about when we should do that. We don't think at this point we should be asking, uh, freshmen or sophomore in college because they're still in the, in the thick of it. But, um, we have to come up with a way to do that and, and I can update you. I don't know when it's going to be resolved, but it certainly needed to be, need to have some data for NEASC when, when we start the process, which really, we're going to be visited in, in four years, three and a half years, but we really have to start that formal process next year. So I can provide an update on that when we see you again.
Karen?
Just to piggyback on what Beth said, um, these reports are really well-done and you can tell you spent so much time and effort and you can tell there's a lot of love in these. Um, I just want to piggyback on the, um, the SEL and, um, I love that it's such a focus of our community. And, um, just when I heard Nicole talking about, um, a lot of the SEL stuff that's going on, it made me think of some of the survey results that came out from the MCAS this year, the written survey results that the kids took at the end. And I think it was the high school students that really took it. But a lot of this, I think, goes to the, the feeling of ownership and connection and community and strong sense of belonging. And I think as we build that, um, social, um, social emotional piece, we're going to see even stronger results from that survey because I think all of this goes to feeling connected in your community. And also that community service piece, I think, is so important for us to, um, grow and continue because I think that too is a huge piece of belonging to your community when you actually see the improvements you can make. So I just want to applaud you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
It's a great job. Keep up the good work. And I do love this consistent connectivity flow from, from K to twelve and then beyond, as we're talking about in college and career. So that's a great concept.
Yeah, it's a great, it's an amazing team. I'm, I feel blessed to work with such a talented group and, and, you know, the support that, that the principals receive from Tom and Sue and Gene and Nick. It's amazing. And, uh, I've enjoyed, uh, seeing the, the consistency and the alignment across all our schools. And I know that when we're a tight team, our schools will work collaboratively together. So, um, it's been great. We had, um, we had, even just putting the PowerPoint together, that process was helpful to us and we learned a lot about each other. So I appreciate the, the committee's time, the time you devoted to our reports tonight. It really, uh, it's where the rubber hits the road. And, um, again, thanks to all the community members, the parents, the students, the staff members that are on our school councils. Their names are, are too numerous to mention, but they're listed on each of your school improvement plan reports. So, thank you.
Thank you all so much. This was exciting and, um, I am looking for the right word, but it just seems like a breath of fresh air. I love the song. So thank you very much.
I was just going to add on the bridging between, you know, elementary school to middle school and middle school to high school. Because I have, I have a ten-year gap in my kids, so I have someone, a younger one now, and the two that are out, out of college now. But just watching the changes, I don't remember a lot from ten years ago, but what I know now is that things have gone very, very smoothly from my daughter when she went, particularly from middle school to high school. So I can see in this ten-year span, um, these things that are really working, and particularly that bridging. It's so important when they do move on to the next level of education.
So, um, I would love to entertain a motion on our agenda, is one drafted for us, to accept the school improvement plan. Does anyone like to make that motion?
I move that the school committee approved the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school improvement plans for Blueberry Hill School, Center School, Wolf Swamp Road School, Glenbrook Middle School, Williams Middle School and Long Meadow High School as presented.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oppose? Post and abstain. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Take your time, everyone.
I'm just going to move to, uh, new business for a minute. We have two guests, uh, that Dr. O'Shea would like to introduce formally to us.
So we're, uh, pleased to, uh, have two new members of our, our leadership team with us here tonight. Uh, soon to join us is a, a familiar face and we'll ask him to, to come up. Uh, he was listening attentively. Uh, Dr. Neil Gaya will join us as the principal of Williams Middle School on December eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
Welcome. And we're so thankful to have Neil back in Long Meadow Public Schools. And so we thought it'd be a good chance to reintroduce him to the community and, uh, see if he had any questions.
Yeah, first of all, let me say thank you for having me this evening and for the opportunity to, uh, to come back to a district that is near and dear to my heart. Uh, I truly look forward to this opportunity to work with the Williams, uh, staff, community, um, students. And, uh, I'm just looking forward to getting here. It, uh, can't come soon enough and... I'm trying to say something? Um, in the spirit of, uh, of thanks, I, I can't say enough for the support that Nicole Paris-Crowe has, has provided me and I know to the staff and to the, to the community. I mean, truly amazing. So I'm indebted, yes. And, and of course Larry Birdy. So, um, like I said, I'm just eager to get here and, uh, jump right in. My first priorities are, are really focused on getting to know systems, structures, uh, then building those relationships with the, the students, teachers, parents, and, and, uh, seeing how I can support the cause as, as I, as I reflect on what I saw this evening. Uh, truly an honor and a privilege to be, to be part of this experience and to be considered part of the team. So, uh, thank you, school committee and Dr. O'Shea. I appreciate it very much.
So we, we know that Neil will hit the ground running. He's, uh, he's been, uh, kind of an active, well, listener at least, in, uh, in some of the, the school improvement planning efforts that Williams has been involved with and the entire district has been involved with. So he's, he's definitely clued in and tuned in to everything that's going on, so.
Thank you and welcome back.
Yeah, thank you so much. Got a quick story just about, uh, coming back.
Sure.
I had my email reactivated and when I opened it up, there was a lovely number in the inbox of approximately four thousand emails. And so, um, I just would like to disclose, I did not take too much time to review those four thousand. But I did read the, the most current. Yeah. So anyway, um, again, thank you so much, folks, and, uh, I look forward to the journey ahead. I appreciate it.
I'm going to add the four thousand were from Nicole Paris-Crowe. You would be second. Yes, yeah.
So thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you and welcome. So our, our next guest, uh, is Paul McNeil and Paul, come on up. Uh, Paul is the coordinator of our drug-free community grant. Uh, he's got a lot of experience in coalition building, uh, relating to prevention and intervention work. And, uh, Paul has been making the rounds in the district and in the wider community. And we're really, really happy to bring Paul on board. His office is just across the hall. Uh, and he has met with our administrative team and, uh, we already know that he will be an asset to, uh, to the entire community. So we thought it would be an opportunity to introduce Paul to you and to the wider community. So welcome, Paul McNeil.
Thank you so much. Thanks for having me.
Thank you.
I, I handed out just a quick little half sheet because I know that full pieces of paper are intimidating and daunting. And so, um, there's a little, a little blurb about what importance and value drug-free communities funding actually can provide this district. Um, it's a huge opportunity, very competitive nationally, to get drug-free communities support program funding from the Substance Abuse Mental Health Services Administration, which is a, a program of the Office of National Drug Control Policy, which is directly under the president's office. So very competitive. Uh, only a hundred new grantees were awarded this year in the entire country. So Long Meadow being one of them. Um, it's a real honor to be a part of this coalition from day one, uh, and day one of funded work. The coalition's been in existence for over a few years. And, uh, I wanted to draw people's attention to a few quick infographics on one side. Um, the, the, the point of our work in, in substance abuse prevention and primary prevention is to increase protective factors for young people where they're growing up and decrease risk factors. And we've seen with the, the work of a coalition, a funded coalition like Close Coalition, which I am proud to be the coordinator of, starting November twentieth, um, is, it is, it is effective work in decreasing prescription drug abuse, alcohol abuse, tobacco abuse, as well as marijuana abuse, as reported in our thirty-day school climate surveys. Um, as you can see in the little graph to the lower left there, alcohol for communities that have drug-free communities coalitions, which Long Meadow now has, uh, there, it's about thirty percent, um, thirty percent higher rate of students who report not using alcohol in the last thirty days. And it's only about six percent more, uh, who report not using marijuana. But I think that will, once marijuana interventions become a little more sussed out, it's still such a new substance to work with as far as evidence-based strategies. Um, we'll see that number decrease as well as, uh, we've seen with alcohol. I guess the longer it'll be regulated, the more research will do and the better we'll do at decreasing youth use. Um, the very, very, very fine print that you probably can't see in the DFC prevention strategies box is how much time and energy is put into certain, uh, strategies. For example, providing information, enhancing skills. Providing information is anything from bringing in a speaker to share. Providing information is anything from bringing in a speaker to share information with people in the community. Enhancing skills can be paying for and supporting, say, evidence-based, school-based curriculum for health and wellness. Teaching, teaching, sorry, training teachers to carry out and implement an evidence-based strategy. That would be enhancing skills. Enhancing access to, say, counseling services, reducing barriers to said counseling services or enhancing access to positive parenting practices. These are things that our coalition will work on. Providing support. So, for example, law enforcement is already doing a lot of work to support healthy, healthy choices being made in Long Meadow. And so, how can we help the, the police department to enforce existing regulations and policies that keep our young people safe on the streets on the nights, weekends, and over the summer? Changing physical design is something that we do as well with this funding. That could be literally just lighting a walkway, something as basic as that. If there's a, a place in the woods that's young people frequent that do certain antisocial behavior, it's just a frequent visit by law enforcement officials or school officials. That's an example of that. Changing consequences. So, instead of punitive immediate expulsion for certain substance infractions, more of a restorative practice and finding out, not necessarily, well, why did you do that? But sort of like, well, what happened to you to make you so anxious and self-medicate with marijuana? And having a guidance team and a, and a school leadership team that's on board with that practice. And then modifying and changing policies. And that's sort of in line with what I just said as well. But making the entire community sort of shifting its energy toward making the healthiest choice for teens the easiest choice. And that's a really tough, long, daunting task that I'm really excited to take on and, and be the coordinator of for at least the next five years and I bet the next 10 years. And if you flip this over, just a few things that I've done in the last five years. I've coordinated drug-free communities' coalitions for the last five years successfully. I've successfully decreased youth alcohol, marijuana, tobacco, and prescription drug use and abuse for the communities of Pittsfield, Massachusetts, Northampton, Massachusetts, Greenfield, Massachusetts. I've helped school districts administer screening, brief intervention, and referral to treatment practices through nurses where they check in in a, a one-on-one, completely confidential conversation with a nonjudgmental check-in around substance use and risky behavior. Establishing prescription lock boxes and prescription drop boxes for unwanted and unused prescription drugs. Training parents in how to talk to their teens about difficult subjects with motivational interviewing as a skill. And of course, developing social norms campaigns, which Tom has already taken on at the high school level, and I'm excited to roll out for middle schoolers, high schoolers, and for parents in Long Meadow. Where you try to highlight positive, healthy behaviors that are already happening in Long Meadow and you're addressing the, the behaviors that actually people have low perception of practice. But in reality, the data shows that a majority of people are practicing these healthy behaviors, and we're going to highlight that over the next few years. And so, I would love to take any questions or any points of concern or things that you want me to work on or focus on, but mostly just to show my face and say I'm very much available. My email address and phone number are on the sheet, and I'm proud to be here.
Thank you very much. Beth. I hate to be that person, but I'm going to be the one that brings up because so many parents are talking about it and so many parents are outraged, I think, at the amount of vaping and juuling going on. It's a hot topic. The perception in the community is that it's kind of rampant in our community. So, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about, because it's so clearly so new that it's not even in the data. We're not talking about alcohol and marijuana as much anymore. We're talking about the juuling. So, how will you address maybe, it seems the perception among kids is it's not a big deal. It's not even harmful. So, that kind of education, maybe, and Tom probably, I'm sure you've already had many discussions about this, but I feel like I have to bring it up just because every parent everywhere in town is talking about it.
Yeah, thanks for bringing it up. I mean, I didn't even mention electronic nicotine delivery systems. We just started tracking it. So, there isn't a ton of data on how many young people are using electronic nicotine devices. The good news is that the reason why I think it's so sort of shocking around how many young people are using these devices is because so much energy and time and, and attention has been put toward alcohol and tobacco that we've sort of have seen this collective decrease in favorability toward youth use. But with these new delivery systems, it's like so, so new, it's so shocking, we have to pay close attention, right? It's, it's hot. And so, they're literally very hot. And I think a lot of the, the perception around young people thinking that it's not as harmful, it really does trickle down from, well, advertising, but also adults thinking, well, it's a much safer way for me to get nicotine into my system. And there has been evidence that's shown that for some adults looking to taper off tobacco use and cigarette use, it can be effective. And that's pretty much the only data we have. We have absolutely no data showing us that, and this is coming from the Office of National Drug Control Policy, National Institute of Health. They have not found anything to show that young people should ever use these electronic nicotine delivery systems, not in lieu of anything else and just not at all. And in fact, just using them at all, you're more likely to use nicotine-based products like tobacco later on and other substances. So, they're not a great, they're not a great thing for young people to use. The, the data and research on what's even in them, how do they work? What does propylene glycol do to your lungs long-term? We don't know. So, it's going to be exciting to figure out how to address that issue, but it's awesome that everyone's paying attention. I think it's really easy to ignore it because it's like, ah, at least it's not cigarettes. Ah, at least they're not smoking weed or drinking alcohol in the bathrooms. It's an issue and it's definitely going to decrease, and we just need to learn more before we start addressing it.
What I've been impressed, how Paul's willingness to take this head-on kind of matches the high school administration's willingness and interest in taking this issue head-on. So, recently, we had sent home a vaping fact sheet that, that was really well-received by parents, and it went out to every parent in the district. And I think many people appreciated that we were trying to stay ahead of that and trying to educate parents, and that'd certainly be a big part of Paul's work going forward. But we definitely, we definitely want to tackle these things head-on and take a hard look at the, the usage and the data and think very specifically about how we can intervene.
A really quick way to do it is to reduce access. So, how are young people getting these delivery systems? And it looks like Enfield has a ton of vape shops, whereas Long Meadow doesn't have many. And Enfield just got a drug-free communities' grant as well. So, I can work in collaboration with their coordinator and decreasing at least retail access for not just minors, but people of age diverting those delivery systems. And there's ways to do that with local law enforcement and the licensing commissions. Similar to alcohol and similar to now marijuana.
Thank you.
Yeah. Glad you brought it up.
I don't have any more questions. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
You're welcome.
Looking forward to it.
Okay. So, we will go back to our agenda. We are on the MCAS. I had put this in as a placeholder because at our last meeting, I promised that if you had any follow-up questions to the MCAS report, we could ask them now or discuss them now with the principals that are here. Does anybody have anything?
Sorry. Questions? Yep. Well, I, I, if there are no questions or comments, Russ.
I told Marty I wasn't going to ask any, but the, it's really more of a global question. I was going to ask it to all the administrators, but the new test, my daughter was telling me about the differences, and it really is quite a bit different from what she was saying. But have you talked as a team about kind of a strategy about how are you going to, you know, kind of relook at how we're teaching kids to, to deal with that? Because it's more about, you know, not just getting the answer, but how did you get the answer and explaining that? And then you're going to get a score on your explanation. And it seemed like, from what she was saying, that part of it was kind of novel. And I think some of the kids that really were probably doing very, very well on that part, they seemed to, you know, at least from what that daughter was saying, she thought that was the part that maybe some of the kids were struggling with. Is there kind of a, a thought process behind how we're going to try to kind of relook at how we're teaching things to deal with that? I know, I mean, it seemed to me in the past few years from what I've seen from my daughters, there is a lot of teaching on that, about how do you get to an answer multiple ways, you know, that type of thing, but.
I'll take the first shot at it, and you guys probably can give more specific examples. But I think if, if we, I think our approach is if we focus on the standards, which require a lot of critical thought, which require inquiry-based instruction, then we think that the kids will be prepared for the types of questions they're going to see on the new MCAS. So, you know, we, we want to avoid sort of teaching to the test and doing the test prep thing, the drill-and-kill thing. But if we're, if we're anchored in the standards, then I think, and that's a big part of the standard-based report card initiative, too, that if we're anchored in the standards, then we think kids are going to be ready to go for MCAS 2.0. So, that, that's, in a global way, that would be, you know, my thought on that. I don't know if that.
My only, thanks. The one thing I would say is that this past year, because it was so new to us, no one really knew what we were supposed to be expecting. So, there was maybe two webinars that we took part in. We were trying to learn about it. There was a lot to learn about it, and there's only so many people that could ask questions if you were confused. We had our coordinators and administration from both the elementary and middle at it, just trying to gather as much data to bring back to the departments to be able to talk to them. But I think now that we've went through it and are able to now have this data, then we can move forward on creating that time and trying to figure it out. And we knew that there was an option to pick more than one answer. So, knowing that, our teachers already last year were focused on creating different things or using practice tests and using stuff that was online to be able to help. And unfortunately, Desi wasn't really great with their timelines of, of allowing us to get access to things that we were going to expect. So, they had sort of a short timeline of things like that. So, we, as soon as we got information about the stuff that the kids were going to have to change their way of thinking for the test, I, I feel like our teachers did a pretty good job of instruction on that. And there's not even a lot of resources out there to support, like especially for math. There's certain like workbooks or things that they can get that kind of support them and help them. And there's, there's not much out there for this new test yet. So, I think now that we have that data back and we can use Edwin to, to pull the stuff that we're doing with the standards and stuff, I think it will help us now moving forward, now that we've seen it, and be able to help now, especially with us, even with the computers. So, it was a new test and it was on computers for, for a couple of grades. So, I think now that we've went through it, it'll be, in the long run, will be good. I mean, the eighth grade, which was great for them, a piece of evidence that they were able to give back to the, to, and I believe the fifth grade, I didn't talk to them, but when they did essays, our eighth-grade teacher was able to see every student's essay that they wrote and if they got a score, zero through four on it, and what that looked like so that they could, they knew which students went, went that extra mile, which ones got a one, got a two. But they were able to see what they actually did on the computer. So, I think in the long run, when we are all on computers, it is going to provide more information, hopefully quicker than it has been. But I think right now, to, to your question, was just more if we have that first piece of data, the foundation, that we're hoping that we can utilize that now and move forward and be able to work together as a team to be able to change up instruction if needed.
Yeah, because I, I guess, because the standards seem to be pretty much the same. It's, I, I think what I said to my daughter is part of it is common sense about how do you, why are you getting that answer? She always gets the answer, and I think most of the kids were, and they were doing well on MCAS. But now they want you to know why, and if they ask you, you the question a different way, can you still answer it?
Right. It's a deeper thinking. It's critical. It's very, it's definitely deeper where you can pick to, or even in math, you would click on one, it would open up an area where you then had to use that like line to graph where it went. So, it is, it was very different for, for them to be able to understand what was happening. And our teachers, especially eighth grade, because it was on computers, were using those to be able to pull some practice tests and do stuff like that with them because it is a different way for them to like be able to X-out two, but then keep two because both of these answer this problem. So, it was definitely a different way for them to be learning the second half of the year last year as we got more information on what was going to be expected. So, standards are the same, but the way that they have, the output was very different for them.
Just to follow up on that, there are a lot of web-based programs that are really cognizant of this new way of thinking, this critical thinking, this high-order thinking, having to provide evidence to support your thoughts orally and writing. And they've really come around and offered teachers and students opportunities to practice this way of thinking electronically, using technology in the classrooms. News ELA, Common Lit, for example. They are following the standards. They are well-aware of what MCAS 2.0, for example, is requiring, and they are providing teachers and students opportunities to practice these various skills with both inferential and, you know, literature-based reading and writing. So, there's just some other opportunities that kids have within their school day to practice these skills.
I think that math workshop model at the elementary level really prepares kids for the types of tests they see in MCAS.
Math workshop, reading and writing workshop, our new science. As we choose new curriculum and create new curriculum, we're creating that with a deeper dive into the standards, I think, in mind. You know, our science is all inquiry-based. Students are in elementary now being asked to solve math problems without having algorithms. And so, we're really looking towards that kind of problem-solving foundation for all our subject areas, and we'll push that up through.
Is it, and now that the standards have remained the same, I think, you know, as Russ was saying, and the, and the test has changed, all of the, especially at the middle school, the worksheets and the workbooks that were designed for the last MCAS, the standards have remained the same. Is that something that is going to be supplied by the publishers or is that something that's going to need to be purchased? Or are we looking at new, needing new materials because of this?
So, just, I can only speak to my own experiences that there was, so Sue Newton, who's our math coordinator at the middle school, had researched a ton of stuff to see what, what they could get into the school to see if that would help like change how they, I mean, yes, the standards are the same, but the way they took the test is very different. So, we ordered and we spent our school money, I think it was just over $1,000 for the seventh grade to have these. And then she told me this year, she said, they were okay, they weren't great, so we shouldn't be ordering them again. But you never know, it's, it's a risk that you take, but there wasn't much out there. So, we wanted to give the kids the opportunity to be exposed to it, but that was, that was one of the things that we, we got that she was feeling. But it's definitely something that we, you know, that sixth and eighth, we just, she said, this is for seventh grade. We asked the sixth grade, they're like, oh, we're not sure, we're not going to use that. So, we just purchased it for seventh, and she now is saying like that's, we definitely don't want to do it again this year. It wasn't as great as she thought it was going to be, so.
Right. Yeah. So, I. So, we want kids to practice so they know how to take the test, but that's not what we want them spending their time, right? We want that whole inquiry-based analytical kind of reasoning stuff embedded into our curriculum.
Yeah, there's like a workbook, a specific workbook that's given.
Are you talking about the, the old MCAS? Yeah. I don't know what you're talking about.
So, yeah, that's what, I mean, there are, it's clear to every parent who sees what comes home. There are practice worksheets that are done by these kids. So, that's where, and, and those workbooks are, are new each time the kids get them. So, that's why I'm wondering, are we looking at needing to purchase those or will those be supplied by the publisher? I don't know how those are purchased to begin with.
Maybe we can, maybe we can talk a little bit afterwards.
I think maybe the teachers are gearing up the month prior to MCAS.
Right. Well, when we talk about textbook and purchasing, that's why I'm asking now, you know, we, we're trying to figure out in the budget where this money is going to come from and if we're looking at needing new workbooks or something like that, I just want to make sure it's on.
That was Mr. Maz's message to the admin team this morning. If there are curriculum needs that, you know, we need to identify them and prioritize them. So, that will be, that will be reflected in any recommendations that we bring to you.
Teachers buy a lot on their own. They spend a lot of out-of-pocket money on that. So, you might be seeing some of that, you know, practice sheets and things like that.
I mean, I guess at the end of the day, what I, what I like about this one is that you're really looking at how you're getting to answers. The old MCAS was just about the answer, which didn't make any sense because you might get to the answer and not know the reason why you did. And an employer doesn't care about, if you got the right, you know, answer, but you don't understand why you got it, it doesn't, you can't apply it to other things. And so, that's the, the benefit. I just think we got to somehow teach that way, too, which is tough because we've been teaching to the old test for so long.
The shift.
All right. So, we will move on to our athletic report. Mr. Capitasto and Mr. Landers.
Professor Landers, Athletic Director, Capitasto. And I think Sue has the presentation on her computer.
It hasn't worked out a signal for me to turn the page yet.
So, welcome, or hello again, I should say. Tom Landers, for people watching at home, I'm the principal of the high school.
Mike Capitasto, Director of Athletics.
So, we're going to try to tell a story today, tonight, about the finances. I know there might be some other questions beyond finances, but really, that's the crux of, of why we're here and, and what we were asked to do. And I guess I would say that it's Mike Capitasto, six years the athletic director, and six years ago, Long Meadow High School asked to come years ago, Long Meadow High School asked to come and present some information to finance sub. And we've been back every year, because, quite frankly, I think Mike was shocked by the reality that he walked into, because it was different from what he anticipated. And we are different than several other areas. So I'll start out with the positives of how we're different. We're the most successful, we're the largest and most successful athletic program in Western Massachusetts. It's great. We have numerous teams. We have some slides that we're going to go through, and you'll see how many programs and how many teams and how many students engage in our athletic program. And it's great. It's a storied past, where our student athletes are recognized, and when all kinds of hardware, so much hardware that we don't even have room in the new, the huge new school. So that's a, that's a great problem to have, and we're very proud of our student athletes. It's an extension of the classroom in so many ways. There are all kinds of lessons learned, and it's a, it's a really, really successful program. However, there's a hole in the financial budget. There has been a hole in the financial budget of the athletic budget at LHS for, Mr. Maz and I have spent many conversations talking about how many years, but I would point back to 2004, when we did some research for this presentation. I know 2004 was a year where the school committee at that time felt that they needed to raise user fees. And then they revisited that in 2007 and 2008. They came up with a three-tiered system. So, we're going to go through this, but I want to acknowledge that, because as great as our sports program is and as many positive opportunities as it presents to our student athletes, we take a lot of calls. We take a lot of calls, they're not the happiest calls, and one of the biggest questions, complaints, concerns is about our athletic fees. It's not the only one. So for the last two years, Mike and I have presented this information to our LHS PAC. We presented last year to our school council, our, we have been requested to present this again in January to our LHS PAC, and we're going to do the same thing for school council. Very often, when we, when we go in there, we see some stern faces, and we see some people who come with very strong, sometimes visceral feelings, and they leave. I'm not saying they feel completely better, but they know a lot more about the reality of the financial budget. So with that said, we will start. As I said, 28 programs, 48 teams in total, gives you a breakdown, I don't have to read it, but last year, 750 student athletes participated in at least one sport. We had 960 students last year, you're talking about just under 80%. That's amazing. That is an amazing statistic, to see how many of our student athletes, students are also student athletes. This is a telling slide. In two or three slides, we have another breakdown of the revenue, but all the revenue that comes in is 392,000. The whole, the entire soup-to-nuts budget for athletics is 502, and so obviously, there's a, there was a deficit, and we're going on last year's numbers of 110,000. Please. A simple chart to show that between, over the last several years, you've had an increasing and widening gap between non-general fund revenue, money otherwise that we get into the athletic department, not from the school committee, and the top line is expenditures. It's just showing that it was, there was a wide gap, and as you can see visually, there's a wider gap.
If I could just highlight one thing, though. Even though that gap exists, we've been covering that shortage. So we've budgeted 75,000 up until FY '18, this current year, in which we doubled the amount, so we're at 150,000. That gap, though, has been anywhere from 20,000 to 110, which was the figure in FY '17. So even though we might have budgeted 75,000, we had to put an additional 100,000 in FY ' '17's funds towards athletics that could not be covered through the revenues outside of the general fund. So through user fees, gate receipts, there wasn't sufficient amount of revenue coming in, plus the 75 that we had budgeted, to cover the operations of the program. So that's why I think we, you know, it really highlights that not only are, our expenses growing, but the amount of revenue we've been bringing in has been pretty flat from user fees and gate receipts. So we've still had to cover that deficit, because we couldn't let the program end with a shortfall in any given year.
Even though our user fees are as high as they are, the highest in Western Massachusetts by leaps and bounds, they are stagnant, and prices are not stagnant. Expenditures, costs are not, are not stagnant, they're dynamic, they're moving. So this is another slide, it's a telling slide, so the user fees. So again, it's not up there, but 502,000 and some change, soup-to-nuts. That's how much the athletic budget at LHS was last year. 289,000 of that came from user fees. So if you, if we are wondering why the user fees, why the former school committees felt the pressure beginning, really, I would say in '07, starting in '04, but they revisited it in '07, I think they revisited it in '08, and brought hockey up. In '07, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, they went to a three-tiered system of 150, 260, and 350. They revisited that in the following year to raise hockey up to 600. But that's a telling slide. The general fund, the funds that come to LHS Athletics at the beginning of the year is 75,000. I want to certainly mention that, as a result of us going to sub-finance over the last six years, I want to thank you and acknowledge that that has been changed and increased for this year, these are last year's numbers, to 150,000. So that's, that's great, but that still does not allow any pressure to be taken off of user fees. That's still just covering what it costs, gate miscellaneous receipts, et cetera. But it all adds up to 392,000, and again, we had to get to 502. Do you want to speak to this? You did the research on this?
This is our, our user fees right here for sport, and this was last adjusted in 2008.
Yeah, the last time any change, any significant change was really made was in '07. And I think the purpose is to really just give you information, because I don't know how many of the members here tonight actually pay a user fee, or athletic user fee, to just see what, what families pay by sport. So you're familiar with what individual families are asked to come up with, if you have multiple participants in any given season, to understand what that financial obligation would be for the user fee perspective.
So when Tom talked about the three tiers, you see the three tiers there, the 150, the 260, and the 350, and then hockey is the exception to that.
Correct. Both boys and girls hockey.
Just a quick question, how do you, how do you determine the fees for each? How do you determine what's in what tier? I mean, some of them I can sort of figure out, like track, there's not a lot of equipment, but-
So the school committee of 2007 determined that. And I think that the logic that they used was cost of equipment, cost of rental, of, you know, is it an inside sport, an outside sport, you have to pay for heat, light, cost of all those things. So they took all those into account, and they created that three-tiered system. It certainly costs more for somebody to play hockey than it does for them to run cross-country. You know, baseball relative to football are different, so that was the logic that they used at the time.
Okay.
And I will just say that we, Michael has done research and juxtaposed our fees next to other towns in Western Mass, we're certainly the highest. We've also compared it to similar towns in Eastern Mass, and even though those are high as well, we're pretty darn high. Even when you compare us to the, to the towns in Eastern Massachusetts, we are, we are very high in our, in our fees, especially when you get into the sports that cost 350. So, user fees, just to clarify, school committee approval in '07, it was actually debated and I analyzed and talked about, and they came up with those structures. We point out that most fees have remained unchanged since 2007. We mentioned hockey already. We want to mention, this is kind of a difficult threshold for families to meet, but there is a family maximum of five sport seasons in the same school year. After five, fees are waived, so you really have to have three children in the high school at the same time, playing multiple sports to benefit from that, but that exists. And lastly, there is an opportunity for families in financial, with financial difficulties, and we direct those people to the business office. Tom talks to them, educates them, has a process that he follows, and we do have several families who take advantage of that. We also have families who may not need a financial discount, but they may need cooperation, they may need a payment plan, and we talked to Tom about that, and Tom gives us, has given us the leeway to work out reasonable, good faith payment plans, and many families utilize that. This is simply a breakdown of the expenditures. I mean, it speaks for itself, but just to give you an idea of how, how much things cost, this is one of the pages, or a similar page, that we show when we show to my, our PAC or our school council. People say, "Where does the money go?" This is great, because it shows them. People don't understand how much transportation costs, or insurance costs, or coaching salaries, for instance. Coaching salaries last year, 224,000. There's fluctuation in the Long Meadow coaching salaries from year to year. I want to say 2007, somewhere around there, in negotiations, in contract negotiations, there was a, there was a philosophy agreed to that would offer coaches, I think, slightly less than, I think, the coaches were asking for, or the, or the Unit A negotiating team was asking for, but offered an incentive for up to 10% for every week that you went into the playoffs. Am I explaining that correctly? So, we go to the playoffs for almost every sport. We're really successful. I don't know if they contemplated that in 2007, we were really effective and really successful in 2007. But that gives a fluctuation, so, correct me if I'm wrong, Mike, that is, that is range from anywhere between 195,000 and the 225,000.
Correct. In this past, that year, almost $31,000 was postseason pay. We had 26 teams participate in some sort of postseason last year.
So not that that's a huge part of the overall school budget, or a huge part of the 502,000, but it's significant. You're talking about a swing, potential swing of $30,000. And that's something that is, that is part of the contract. Which leads to the next slide. It is, salaries are determined by collective bargaining. I mentioned the 10%. Question that we're often asked is, how do you come up with the numbers for a particular sport? Fair question. You come up with it, we come up with it through looking at historical numbers of student athletes who play that particular sport, and we take in information if we know that there's going to be a huge uptick. The problem with that is, you don't necessarily know who's going to come out for a given sport, or who's going to make a given team, until you're in it. So, I know that, I know that one of the, we had an uptick in, in boys' cross-country this year. If you compared our boys' cross-country program five and six years ago, you'd be looking at numbers in the mid-30s. If you compared us to last year, you'd be looking at mid-50s chasing 60. And on paper, we got up, all the way up to 83 this year. 83 student athletes, to be fair, were not at practice every day, we had a healthy amount of injuries, we had probably, you know, on the ground, we probably had closer to 65 student athletes practicing a day on, on average. But 83 relative to, on paper, is still very significant relative to 58 from last year. But you don't know that you're going to get that until the team started. You don't know how many students developed an interest, a recent interest in running, or who got cut from a sport, who decided that they were going to play this sport, but they didn't want to do that. And cross-country for boys and girls is one of our non-cut sports that we have. We offer one of those every season. There's some debate about legally, do we have to do that? Or do we only have to do that for students with disabilities? We go beyond the regulation, and we do the right thing for student athletes, and we have at least one non-cut sport every single season. Sometimes we have two. Long Meadow High School football program is a non-cut sport. Most people don't know that. It's been a non-cut sport for the last 25 years. If you show up and you put the effort in, you will be on that team. So, but we have at least one. But anyway, we, you look at the daily participants, you look at, Mike can speak to this better than I can, but certainly, certain contact sports, Mike called for more supervision. Do you want to talk to that, Mike, at all?
Yeah, I mean, for example, for football, you have 11 different positions on offense, 11 different positions on defense, and so you're going to need positional coaches for each position, or for safety to combine at least two positions. Certain contact sports, for example, for wrestling, when we go to a tournament, we need two coaches available, because you're going to have two people wrestling at the same time, and a coach has to be on the mat when they're wrestling. So that's why wrestling does have a second coach. So there's a bunch of variables to that. And again, it goes sport by sport, and we take a look at it, and again, we did add a coach to cross-country, because we were seeing the numbers increase and increase. And Tom, and Tom and I spoke, and we were able to add a assistant coach for both boys and girls cross-country because of the numbers. So we do take a look at a lot of different areas when we're looking at this.
There are two, I just want to add, touch on the two bottom bullets. Pre- and postseason meeting with athletic director for every coach. Again, that was new under Mike Capodosto. I want to acknowledge that, that we, we post positions every single year, coaches are hired for one year at a time. So there is no expectation to that job beyond one year. But in addition to that, we added the preseason meeting with every coach, every coach, and the postseason meeting with every coach, every head coach, every varsity coach, because they are the leader of that program as well. And this year, Mike instituted anonymous postseason survey of team captains, which is a good thing. And you'll see on a later slide that he has a suggestion for, that we're expanding that, and we have an idea to get that as well. But those are the kinds of questions that you're asked. Sports bring out the best, sometimes not the best in us, because they're high emotions, and this is what I say when we, when we have our back-to-school sports night. We remind parents to please talk to the coach first, and please keep the focus on the field, on the court, on the diamond. But I acknowledge the, the high emotions that are involved with sports. Having a son or a daughter not make a team is challenging. Having a son or a daughter make a team that first week is ecstatic, but it might not be so happy week three or four, when playing time becomes a reality. So we get a lot of questions about these last two bullets. Do you ever ask parents, do you ever ask athletes about their experience on a team? And do you ever evaluate these coaches? I think there's an assumption out there that, that, I know that there's an assumption from some people, because I've literally taken the phone calls, and Mike, Mike has taken 100 phone calls, and that's one of the things that we wanted to say tonight. There is a pre- and postseason meeting, in addition to, if someone is not doing an effective job, we don't have to hire them back. So that's something that Mike spends certainly a lot of time on.
Hang on one second.
So is that the evaluation? Because that is a question I've gotten, too. Is that meeting, you're not going to do like a teacher evaluation for coaches, but is there a short form for them, or is it really the two meetings and the decisions made based on the season in those two meetings?
I'll let Mike speak to that, and then I'll add something.
Do you want to chime in about?
We don't have a formal process, sort of to what you said, there's not a teacher evaluation. We'd say it's an informal evaluation based on the feedback that we received from the surveys. Gives Mike some basis for conversation in regards to areas- Gives Mike some basis for conversation in regards to areas that we might need to spend some attention on in the future. And I think it does help us decide whether, from both our perspective and the coach's perspective, is this, you know, the right place for them to continue their career. So, I think it's-
It's their Unit A contract, so it gets a little, so we do an informal, I mean, I'm out there every day at practice, walking around and taking notes and stuff. And so, we do an informal preseason with every paid coach, whether they're freshmen, JV, assistant, varsity. And then at the end of the season, again, what did I see? What did, you know, administration see? What did, you know, any feedback we received from parents? Any, again, the survey with the captains was new last year, and we were able to use some of that in the postseason meetings. So, yeah, that's-
I'll say I agree with your potential recommendations to do like all the seniors.
So, yeah, I mean, we're slowly expanding that and to go over all that.
Okay, thanks.
Karen? Did you say you are adding a parent survey in? Or because the emotions are so high, you don't want to add that parent survey in?
My recommendation is no. And I think we should stick with our student athletes. I like the idea, I like what Mike did this year, and I like his idea of expanding it. The student athletes experience it. They are there at practice every day. They know the nuances. You get half-information, misinformation, and wrong information, whether you're talking about a football coach or an algebra teacher. Because the parents are simply not on that field, they're not in that classroom. So philosophically, I support expanding it, but keeping it to student athletes. And I like the anonymity of it. That's a huge part of this. Students will tell you, you know. I want to say two things. Mike mentioned it. He's omnipresent at practices, but he also has developed a captain's council. And, you know, when you see other effective programs, you steal them. You make them your own. And Mike knows a lot of ADs, and he came back two years ago and said, I'm going to start this. And just because an athlete is, because she's a great runner, and they made her captain, or somebody's a good hockey player, and they made him a captain, it doesn't mean that they know anything about leadership. I was a captain in high school for a particular sport, and nobody ever talked to me about what it meant to be a captain. Nobody talked to me about what you do if you see things in the locker room, or off the field, or at a party on a Saturday night. I think, and up until very recently, we let students wing that as well. Coaches pick them, that's appropriate, but we started that. So, the other part is that Mike has a good rapport with those captains. He talks to them. He often will call them in and have private conversations and say, I'm not going to use your name, tell me what's going on, how are things? They're great sources of information, and they're balanced, experienced stories, because they live it. So, long answer to a short question, but I would support the expansion of student athletes, and the anonymity is important. But I wouldn't go to parents. We hear from a lot of parents. Parents are taxpayers, we work for them, and we hear from them. But I think you're going to, the high emotion, you're going to get a lot of people who are going to be out for a coach because playing time was an issue. That's always a big issue.
I hear you on that, and I get that piece of it. But I, and I don't know that necessarily a survey of all parents would be a great idea, but I think because of the difference, the difference in the viewpoint and the understanding of what it really means to be a student athlete coming from a parent's perspective, I also think is an important component. I agree that the students are living it, they're breathing it, you know. Their opinions are first and foremost the most important, but I also think there's something to be said to a student coming home. And as a parent, you can tell something's going on, you can tell something's wrong, but they may not be, especially at this age, willing to voice their opinions. And I do think that it may be important to find a way that our parents can also give some input anonymously.
Well, what we say, and that's a tough issue, so let me take it on, straight on. Parents have to come and speak to us, and they cannot be anonymous. I'm sorry to say that, but that's the truth. They're the adults, we're the adults, and we have to be the adults. And what we say is, you know, similar to on our Welcome Back Sports Night, please talk to the coach first, the athletic director next, and our doors are open as administrators. But that is the most sane, rational, logical pattern to follow. We hear from a lot of parents. I love working at Long Meadow High School. My experience is parents are not shy. So, and that's a good thing. They're involved, and they're supportive. So, and I think the truism is that you, negative feelings motivate people more than positive feelings. So, we hear a lot. We hear a lot more negative than we do positive, because those people will see us on the sideline and say, hey, it was a great season. But we get a lot of that feedback. But we really want to make sure, just like I'd ask, just like, you know, if you really want to know what's going on in a math class or a social studies class, it might be having some challenges. You talk to those students, and you talk to those students alone, and say, I'm not going to use your name, you get a real good issue, a real good idea of information and feedback. We're not opposed to parents, but I'm just being honest. I could think through it, I'm not saying absolutely no, but my first instinct is I think that the student athletes are a better source. I could finish and then take other questions? Or do you want to take questions now? Or do you want me to sort of go through? Because I think there are two slides left.
Go ahead, why don't you finish, and then-
And I just wanted, we put this in there, because booster clubs are amazingly generous and hugely important to Long Meadow High School sports. All booster clubs in all towns are, but I want to go back, and I want to acknowledge two things that make our booster clubs. And every sport is a little bit different. Some have really big and really active booster clubs, and some are somewhat smaller. But there's a culture in Long Meadow to have nice equipment, new equipment, new uniforms. That's great, that's positive. That has been part of the reason that booster clubs have been very generous and raise a lot of money. What I mean by that, an example of that, is there's an expectation. If you looked at the amount of turnover in uniforms for the average high school, and we've called high schools, and we've done some comparisons. You know, the numbers that are thrown around to us are, every seven or eight years, we change uniforms. There's an expectation and a desire among some programs at the high school to change uniforms every two years. That's great, that's positive. But that's above and beyond what the sports budget could handle. So, booster clubs really take on a lot of that. We appreciate that, but that's one reality. The other reality is to go back to the first few slides that we saw. When we raise, when we're in the predicament, the financial predicament or reality that we're in, already being short and having such high fees, there is extra pressure put on Long Meadow booster clubs. So, with that said, a couple of things we wanted to reiterate tonight. Mike met with booster clubs last year, and he's going to meet with them again. There's been some gray area. The guidance that we received, you know, 10 years ago, and then again, five years ago, was that booster clubs are separate from us, we don't control them. They operate on their own. If they want to raise money, they can do that. But we've had some good dialogues about, while we don't control them, we can certainly have better dialogue, more dialogue, and give them some thoughts. And if they choose to ignore them, then we have, we can either allow them to ignore us or have a wider dialogue. If you, as the committee, want to put limitations on that. But one of the things we want to remind parents of is that it's voluntary participation. I think Mike said that, he'll say that again. Support every year a reality of not only our booster clubs, but booster clubs throughout the country. I have children, my children belong to booster clubs. It's similar in other towns. The booster club president and the head coach get together, and they have dialogue about what could help, what could add value. I think one of the things that we are going to remind booster clubs and booster club presidents about is, you can say no. That's a dialogue. And so, that's something, we get asked about volunteer coaches all the time. Again, I would use the example of the cross-country. When you bank on approximately 60 runners, and you get 20 more than that, sometimes, again, booster clubs are great. They come and they say, in those dialogues with the head coach, they say, we could use another coach, we could use another expert. Sometimes they'll bring in a goalie expert, and that will add value, but it wouldn't be covered either by Long Meadow High Schools or most high schools. Our booster clubs, like I said, they provide support for uniforms. They certainly offset the cost of bandwidth, and they completely take the funding for senior participation gifts. Very generous, play a huge role in the experience of LHS student athletes, and we just want to acknowledge that. And the last, the last two, I think Tom is going to take the second to last, and I will take the last.
Sure, I can speak about the concession stand. So, the concession stand out on the stadium field, there might be a perception that the profits that are generated from that operation support athletics. The reality is, it goes into a revolving account that needs to be used on the concession stand. So, similar to any fee you charge, that has to be used for the purpose of that fee. Receipts collected from sales at the concession stand are used to reinvest either in the building, equipment needs for its operation. Staff buy clubs, so both the key club, and I believe the business club this year, supported its operation, and they receive a portion of the revenue that is raised to go towards their club activities. You can see our balance in the fund is $8,600. Last year, we did have a slight deficit in our operation, but it was, again, because we decided to make some investments in some upgrade on equipments and some fencing that was put in to help kind of control and streamline the lines for customers. So, it's not necessarily that we can use the revenue to offset any cost, on top of the fact, we usually don't generate a large profit. It's just more as a convenience to participants at the sporting events.
And so, the last formal slide is next step. So, I've mentioned some of these, but I just want to go over them. I think that, like I said, there has been gray area and some confusion about what role and what kind of dialogue, and what kind of guidance, and what kind of control, if any, we could have over booster clubs. And as I understand it, our control of them is very, very limited. There used to be, you know, co-mingling of funds with schools years ago. That's not done anymore. It was done to separate the two entities. But there's opportunities to strengthen the relationship. Like I said, Mike is meeting with, offering a meeting to the booster clubs. But as we think about it, I think that's good, and it's symbolic. We really think that moving forward, we should revisit, we found a document that existed from, you know, 2006, 2007, 2008, to give some guidance, and in writing, because not everyone's going to come to a meeting. So, to create a document and to distribute that, maybe put that on our website, I think increased communication would be good. Analysis of the general fund appropriation. We, like, as I said, we've been going to finance sub for six years. We enjoy it. We actually used to, the first couple of years that Mr. Birdie and Mike went, it was in the spring. Last few years, we've asked to go in the fall, just so the members on the finance sub can know about the potential issues in October or late September. We went on September 26th of this year. That's a lot better than going in April or May. We'll continue to do that. Wider distribution of financial information to stakeholders. What we mean by that is, the reports that you got from Michael a few weeks ago, these are very, very, very detailed. This is one big fund, and Tom could speak to that better. But Mike takes the, and does a P&amp;L sheet for every single sport, just so we know exactly what's coming in, what's going out, what needs. Our suggestion is to put this online. If we put this online, and we are transparent about this, just like when we explain it to our PAC or our school council, they don't necessarily go away happy, but they go away a lot more informed and a lot more satisfied that they know where the money is going. So, suggestion that we have is to put that online and let anybody look at it after we go to sub-finance, and after Tom verifies that the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted. As Mike said, expansion of the postseason survey to all seniors, and it doesn't say that, but it's going to be anonymous, and that's a part of it. And then there's been some suggestions, and it's a good one, that we might want to advertise the subsidy application process a little bit more. So, we're happy to do that as well. And again, that's done through Tom's office and with him, but we can certainly play a role in advertising that, if that's something that the committee wants us to do. But I think that that's the right thing. Anyway, so-
Can I underscore that first bullet? I think that's one that we've talked quite a bit about, and, you know, how can we strengthen that relationship? How can we improve communication? And making sure the booster club understands the district policies, MIA policies, the regulatory environment that we work in, the fiscal realities of the district, the fiscal realities of our families. I think doing that in a very coordinated, purposeful, annual way will go a long way. I think that will strengthen that partnership. And so, Mike, to his credit, has already initiated that, and that's something that, you know, we're all interested in seeing tightened up going forward.
Yeah, so finance sub talked about it as well. And I think we were having an issue with assistant coaches and kind of volunteer coaches, and who was paying them, and that type of thing. And booster clubs are legally completely separate, but I think the employee side of things, we need to have a better handle on, because it's, and we've talked about maybe creating a policy to do that, so that it's clear that, you know, everybody's being Coreyed, which my understanding is they are.
Yep.
But also, how are we paying them? How are we deciding, is there going to be another coach, another volunteer coach? Is that person being paid? And how that's going to happen? Because it really needs to come through us. The other thing with the booster clubs, I would add, is I've had some issues recently with some schools where they weren't actually organized, it's 501(c)(3), and we don't control them, but we might want to make sure that they are all organized correctly, because if they're not, there's a lot of legal issues associated with fundraising when you're not actually organized, is the fundraising.
One of the suggestions last time we met was to organize.
Yeah. It's very important for them to protect the parents, because otherwise, the AG's office can get involved, and it's a mess.
So, just want to answer that. So, I'm going to ask Mike to speak to the process that happens for volunteer coaches. And then I just want to, I'll add something. But Mike does it, so I'm going to ask him to speak to that.
So, volunteer coaches, when a coach says, hey, I have so-and-so that wants to volunteer, we talk about it, who, why, what they bring to the table. And then I have a follow-up conversation with that volunteer. After I have that follow-up conversation with that volunteer, I will speak with the head coach again, saying yes, give the okay. Now, they have to go down to HR and follow all the process, same process that every paid coach does, have to be TB Coreyed, fingerprinted. They have to have concussion certificate, they have CPR, first aid, AED. So, they follow all the same process, except for filling out the paperwork for payment. Yeah.
I think it was more after the fact, finding, you know, if their volunteering means not getting paid. And I think there was a little bit of-
And very often, booster clubs are generous, and they give them a gift. There's no doubt about that. We don't know any amount, but we know that booster clubs are generous, and they might give them something.
Yeah, and that's what we've talked about as far as the ethics law and all that.
And if there's specific guidance, we're happy to, again, you know, listen to that.
It's a great idea. It's just there's certain laws that you have to follow them, so you can only have the exchanging of money. And actually, we happened to be at a conference where they were talking about that very issue. So, it's one of those things that I think we're going to have a lot more conversation about. It's easily fixed and addressed, but-
We'd appreciate some legal guidance on that, again, so we can advise booster clubs to do things the right way, and if there's something that we need to do, that would be helpful.
I just want to mention, the booster clubs obviously are very important, especially if we're facing a deficit. So, I think that we all recognize the role that they play. The problem is that they're picking up a role that they don't, is not what boosters really are intended to do. They're picking up a role where they're paying for volunteer coaches- They're picking up a role where they're paying for volunteer coaches or they're paying for uniforms because they want a certain type. And I think that it does require a relationship to be had with them to talk about what that means. So if you want specific uniforms and you're asking parents to pay, you're tacking that on to an already user fee. And it's really hard for a parent to say, "No, I'm not going to buy my son." They're going to go out there in a different uniform. And so that's where the lines are crossed. They're separate, but they're not separate, because those kids are going out in the uniforms that were purchased through the booster club. So if all of the money that's raised for the booster club goes into a big pot, and then that is then dispersed evenly through players, then that's one thing. But it's not, from what I'm seeing. The money is raised and then that money is used for the individual student. So I think that there does need to be a discussion. I think that the amount of money that's asked of, we have user fees and then we have booster fee on booster fee on booster fee. And it really, a discussion needs to be had. I think we're starting it here because the athletic department has a deficit, and we cannot expect the booster club to be picking that up. And I think that they're taking on a role that they, it's not what boosters should be doing. When we talk about paying for volunteer coaches and saying that they're separate, I do think we need to talk about the ethics involved in that. That someone who's being, you know, quarried, they're going through all of the things as any coach would do, and then you're getting email blasts saying that they want money now to pass the hat to pay for this coach. And that they're keeping the names of the people who do that and who don't pay for it. So we really, it's not to put down booster clubs, it's recognizing that the athletic department is facing a deficit that we need to address, but it's also recognizing that the booster club is taking on a role that I don't believe that, you know, is what booster clubs were intended to do, and I don't think it's what they want to do. What everybody wants to see is for these coaches to get paid. And I think that that's what we all want, but we need it to be done in the right way. And I don't want it, and I don't think anyone wants it to be passed off to the booster club, but I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention, because it's not to devalue the booster clubs. They're really necessary, but I don't want to be putting it all on them. We have to recognize what they're doing, because we should be doing it. And that's why I bring that.
So a couple of things. You make great points. And ultimately, if you can, you work with a finite budget. I don't envy your position. I think if you went back to 2004 and 2007, I think those school committees struggled at the time. They were either going to cut teachers or put more of a, you know, put more of a high user fee. It's not, it's not exactly the booster club, but they're interconnected. And you are at that place again. We could use more money. We will happily accept more money. But we understand the difficult position that you're in, that you don't have, you know, an ending source of money. That's the first thing that I would just say. The only other, and I agree with some points that you made, let me give two quick comments, though. Volunteer coaches, extra coaches exist in every town. It's not only a Long Meadow thing only. I'm going to go back to, I was just at a banquet for one of my sons, and there were 11 coaches and three were paid by the district. They got up and thanked the booster club and said, "We just want to thank the booster club," because they gave them, you know, they might have given them a little something. It is common. I don't mean it's right or wrong, but it's common. I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing that I think is an elephant in the room is the culture of some programs, not all programs. Some are bare-bones programs, but some have extra coaches that we would, not only Mike and I could never suggest, but I don't think anybody in this room, and I'm not going to point out any program, because that would be wrong, but we could probably, you know, again, we could probably get to, I'll use an easy one. If the cross-country numbers really stay at 80, I think that that's three coaches. I don't think that there's anybody who would disagree with that. That was a one-year bump. There were reasons for that, we're having dialogue with a coach. But if that stays constant, that deserves another coach. We would come down to Tom and we would advocate for that. He would remind us that there is a, already a big deficit in the budget, but we have dialogue. We have respectful, good-faith dialogue. There is, there are some teams that have numerous extra coaches that the coach and the president of the booster club have had dialogue about and they agree upon that we could never support. There are teams that have five and six and more coaches, and again, they may think, they think that that adds value, and the parents are willing to pay, and they think that it adds value. And God bless them, but we could never ethically advocate that that many people be paid by taxpayer dollars, because we think you can do it with three coaches. And they might want seven, and we think you can do it with four coaches and you might want nine. I just want to be upfront about that, that that's kind of the sticky issue, that certain programs say, "We're used to this. This is great. This adds value to us. Why can't we do this?" And that's why some guidance would be appreciated as to, can we tell them what to do or can we suggest to them what to do?
I think, just continuing on that, I think the lines become so crossed, because the boosters are not an entity unto themselves. Then you have the captains who are asking the kids for the money, or you have the coaches. Everything is entwined, and that's really, and then when you have volunteer coaches, are they already staff members or are they people from the community? And then if you have staff members who are volunteer coaches, and then you have parents who are paying them, whose students are in their classes, we get, it just gets very, very crossed. And I think that's where the boosters are separate, but they're not separate. And I think that the, their value is obvious, and I don't think it's any particular sports. Boosters are across the board, and I don't think that they necessarily know. So I think that it's a good starting point, and I think that an organization of it and everybody knowing what their role is and what can and cannot be done is, will be really important.
Yeah. If there's, again, if there's guidance on that particular issue, that would be appreciated. I think that's a good conversation.
And I think on that note, you know, a lot of issues have been raised. We all had a lot of questions collectively that I think need to be addressed, but could never be addressed in one meeting. I asked you to put this presentation together just in hopes of kind of, you know, creating an overview of some of the things that we've been talking about and the background behind it. But I think overall, we have some work to do. I think, you know, a lot of the discussion that's just happened just now is stuff that I think we as a committee and with the team need to work out behind the scenes, you know, in subcommittees, just because I think it's pretty obvious that, I know, you know, from my standpoint, I'd like to take a look at the budget. And on top of that, you know, there are some gray areas that we're talking about that I think need to be fine-tuned a little bit better, so that we avoid some of the issues that we're talking about now. And I don't want to cut off questions, but let's keep in mind that I think we need to, you know, do some work here and roll up our sleeves, because today we can't solve it. But let's go ahead with...
Yeah, not, I don't want to get into a slew of questions, just, I appreciate you coming. I appreciate the transparency. I love the idea of linking it to the website, so parent, that's a big, huge factor, parents knowing what's going on. There's a lot of misinformation. But I will agree with Michelle in saying that we do have a lot of work to do behind the scenes, given what you've come and presented. I think it's our due diligence, I think, to look at athletic fees again. When you sit here and say, "The athletic fees were not, haven't been revisited since 2007," it's crazy to me that in 10 years, we're not looking. And I'm not saying raise lower. I'm saying we just need to really look at them. Maybe some are not in line with whatever sport. We, I think, finance sub needs to delve into that, and it takes, you know, it's worth it to, when you say it's a decade of not having looked at the user fees, because to piggyback on Stephanie's, the boosters are picking up the slack, and then it's not just the boosters. Some sports, you're paying the user fee, you're paying the booster fee, and you're buying a new uniform. So the uniform isn't coming in what you pay to the booster. You're paying, so $150 fee that you started out with may balloon up to like $300 when you're all said and done. So I think, just to wrap that up, I would say that Michelle's right, we need to really look into a lot of these issues a little more carefully and consider the budget.
Just, so along those lines, Beth, it almost sounds like we may need some policy, as much as I don't want to say it, but do we have booster policies? And maybe we need to set up some policies with guidelines and, I mean, parents don't know the conflict of interest with gift giving and coaches, you know. A lot of this is not known, so maybe we need to consider this in policy and actually come up with some policy, guidelines. Secondly, just a logistic, Tom, on the concession stands, so the bathroom is included in that funding, you know, if there's a problem in the bathroom or...
Wouldn't necessarily say the funds from the concession stand are for the repairs to the bathroom. That would probably be more of a maintenance budget issue. It would be for the concession side forward.
Okay. Just a logistic question. And then with regard to the surveys, are the surveys conducted with the students once the season has ended?
Correct.
Okay. And right now, it's only open to captains, so I guess...
This year, a matter of, we, a few of our meetings in the fall with the captains, we are going to expand to all senior student athletes from this fall. And then it'll go to the winter, and then it'll go to the spring.
Because, you know, my concern with captains is that you may have one or two, or two captains on a team. That's not unheard of. And two captains with anonymity doesn't really mean, you know, anonymity necessarily. I would just, I would like to suggest that that be opened up to the entire team on a voluntary basis, because I think the underclassmen have input to give. These kids, they know their sports, they have a lot of valuable input. Some are not comfortable going to the seniors to relay information. Seniors are on their way out the door. Sometimes when the season wraps up, they're like, "It's been great, I'm out of here." You know, "I've got a, I've already got signed, I'm not, I'm not filling out any surveys." And the incentive may be lost on seniors. If you're waiting for a sophomore or a junior who may have input to speak when they're a senior, they're not going to be there to, they might affect the change, but they're not going to be there to be part of that change either. Let me just go through my list here.
Those are good points.
Let me just make sure I covered the points that I wanted to say. Yeah, I guess I would just ask that you consider opening it up voluntarily, and if, you know, I could see your concern maybe getting inundated, maybe, maybe that's, I don't know what the reason would be, not to open it up to all the kids. But if it's, you know, if, you know, things are going great, you might get no input. If you get input, I think that's something that needs to be considered too, if you're getting a lot of input.
Oh, those are good points.
Yeah, so I think it's really kind of a two-part thing. You know, first of all, the boosters in Agawam, they created a brochure for the booster club and they had a booster club policy. So I think instead of trying to do that on your own, if you call over there, you can get a model to work off, because they did a ton of work on that, actually, because they had the same, everybody has the right, the right idea, they're doing the right thing. It's just nobody, it's so complicated what you're actually supposed to do with those clubs. And so I think it's just helping everybody if they have more, you know, a guideline they can follow. With the budget, what finance sub looked at that, so it's 500, 2,000, 705 is the actual cost essentially. And with the additional 75,000 we put in, we're about 467, 354. That leaves a gap of just over 35,000, which I think we talked a little bit about. So when we get to the budget discussions later in the year, I think that's something we need to talk about, is, you know, last year we put in 75,000. The question is, should we be putting in the other 35? Now, that means the user fees stay exactly where they are now. And that's assuming nothing goes up in price, which is not going to happen. But somewhere around 35, 40,000, we level out. That's not going to fix the user fee problem. The fees will be the same if we did that. So that's something I think we need to do, but it's probably an overall discussion with the budget. We can't really just pull that out and say we want to do it. And I guess the last question I have for you is, Ms. Robinson had sent a letter, which I know the two of you read, and she has many valid points in that letter and concerns, and really questions I've heard from other parents as well. Is there anything you want to address as far as, you know, some of those concerns? It was really, some of it was different teams and how do you figure out what the fees are going to be for one or the other, and the cost overall for families, and, you know, I'm sure you read it.
I did read it. I read it. I think that we've answered them all. I don't know, like, if there's one that I, we didn't answer, I'd be happy to, but I remember things like what you just raised. So, for instance, there are parents who think that Mike and I set the fee by explaining that that doesn't, that's not the case, we, and, you know, how you decide how many coaches. So I'm, I think we answered them, but if there was one or two that we didn't, I'd be happy to give it a shot.
I think it's, and we talked about this in finance sub quite a bit too, and I think, Beth, you're touching on it a little bit, is, I think a lot of parents don't understand how, you know, one sport that seems to really have no cost associated with, other than coaching, and the fee is X, and then you have another, you know, sport that looks like it's very cost-intensive and the fee's the same. And I think maybe that's a subcommittee discussion, but that's something that comes up a lot, and it is hard to explain. I know we talked about it in finance sub, but...
I mean, I'm guessing that the school committee at the time asked Athletic Director Derry for his, I don't know that. I know that they came up with those tiers. I'm assuming that they had some dialogue about logic, but...
Well, maybe what makes sense is...
I don't know what, why, you know...
And as Michelle said earlier, not tonight, but at some point, maybe it makes sense to have a finance subcommittee where we talk about what you think would be the reasonable fees.
Yep, absolutely.
Because committee, I wouldn't want to set those without, no, I mean, you know better than us what the fee should be, so...
No, no, we don't.
And then everybody complains and says he made the decision.
In a perfect world, that would be, yeah.
And I think, as is often the case, communicate, a lot of this relates to communication, so I heard tonight, communication with kids, giving kids opportunities to speak to coaches, communicating to parents, the fee structure and the financials that we reviewed tonight, communication with the boosters about, you know, what our needs and expectations are. So a lot of it comes down to that, and I, you know, so that's something that, you know, we'll remain committed to. And then there are the budgetary considerations and the policy considerations, so there's some work in front of us on this. I think this has helped clarify a lot of what we need to address and take care of.
And again, I think it opened the conversations that we need to have going forward. You know, in Ms. Robinson's letter, there were some points that, you know, we, I think, need to address in subcommittees, some suggestions as to how to handle some of the issues that have come up. So I think, you know, just in the interest of solving it, let's take it to subcommittees, and if you have anything, you know, specific, then you can email it to Marty and Hill. You know, he and I will together figure out which place to go with it, if that makes sense.
Can I just add one quickly? When we, you have the discussion with boosters and we're talking about budget in this gap too, I don't know if we're really taking into account how much they're picking up, so I think that that will be important information to have too. How much are they picking up out of that, if we have a $35,000 gap? But really, we're not including everything that the boosters are picking up with banquets and, you know...
From our standpoint, is the uniforms is the main piece in voluntary coaches, that they think. I mean, outside that, that's all above and beyond what a school, most schools do with banquets. Most schools, banquets are done through the booster clubs and are separate. So really, you're talking uniforms and whatever they decide are voluntary coaches. I mean, that's, that's really it. I mean, we try to purchase bare, you know, equipment, and some of it's bare bones, but we do purchase, you know, a lot of things. So I think it's more uniforms in coaches that booster clubs have been picking up. We provide buses to every, outside of hockey, and that was decided years ago, but we provide buses. Now, whether they want a coach bus or not, that's on the booster club and provide. And we would still provide whatever a yellow bus costs, but, you know, so there's some things that they want above and beyond what we are providing.
And they often do that, and they're generous, and so they would, they would upgrade from a yellow bus to a coach bus. And that is on them and should be on them.
Okay. I think that'll go to finance sub, because I think I'm wondering, yeah, how does that? It's important for us to, I think, have all that information, so we know what's being funded and not.
Can I just ask a question real quick? I'm just looking at the...
Can I just ask a question real quick? I'm just looking at this comparison chart of all the different towns. Can you just give me a quick explanation? So I see where it says, like, money for coaches, and, you know, it says school budget, and then money for athletic, athletic budget. And some of it says school budget, and then it'll be parentheses, 256,000 or something like that. Can you just quickly give me an explanation?
Every, almost every district pays for their coaches out of their school budget, whatever the money they are allocated at the high school or towns are allocated. So that's where that is. And then on top of it, for Agawam, for example, they don't have any user fees. It's fully funded through the town, town's budget, or the school's budget. So it's about $256,000 plus whatever their coaching salaries are. It could be another 250.
Okay.
So that's where that is. Amherst is the only other school that doesn't fully fund their coaches. They get 125,000 towards that, but then they also get $60,000 towards their general fund for transportation officials and things like that. And then the user fees and gate receipts offset any other of the expenses.
Okay. Thank you.
But everybody else, you know, when you see the school budget, the coaches are paid from their school.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So I, we, again, we'll, we'll come back together. I think the consensus here, you've heard, you know, we, we need to roll up our sleeves and dig in a little bit. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for having us. We appreciate it.
It's overtime in terms of meetings.
It's okay. It's a-
Do you have anything else you wanna present tonight?
Stay in case we need to call you back up.
Go to sleep under my desk. Thanks so much for having us. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have no administrative reports tonight. We'll move on to subcommittee reports. I do not believe Finance Subcommittee has anything, because we have not met. We're meeting this Tuesday, or we're meeting, yes, this coming Tuesday. Policy Subcommittee.
We did not meet.
You did not meet.
I just mentioned, there's a packet in your packet that overviews the changes that Policy Sub made to a number of technology-related policies. So if you have any questions, let us know.
Okay. So does this count as our second meeting, or no, that's until the next meeting? Okay. All right. Operations Subcommittee.
So we did not meet, but I asked Marty if he could give us a clean copy in our packet. So that's what you have for the long-range plan. And this was really, Tom and Marty did a great job of putting together kind of the issues and what we'll be facing in the years. And then as a committee, we talked about it a few times and beefed it up just a little bit. And so that's what you have in front of, in front of you right now. Everything that we could sort of brainstorm would be facing the school committee.
I think you did a fantastic job. I mean, really thorough, way more than I was expecting to, you know, to hand off. But thank you for doing the work. I, I would like to suggest that we take this, you know, I reviewed it. I didn't see anything that I would wanna change. If anyone else here feels the same, why don't we just take a, we can even take a vote to-
You don't have to think about things for 10 years now. 10 years, you can look and reevaluate both.
So I would love to entertain a motion. It is on our agenda, a recommended motion, if anyone would like to make that. Karen, do you want to?
I move the school committee approve the recommend, recommendation for the town's long-range plan as presented by the Operations Subcommittee dated November 27, 2017.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Thank you. All those in favor? Opposed? Awesome job. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to other reports. LPVEC?
So the, we had a meeting, and it was a joint meeting with the corporation and the collaborative, where they went through the audit. And the findings were good. There was no non-compliance. So-
Okay. Good news. All right, great. See you.
Did that meet?
Okay. And food services. You wanna speak? We just met. Go ahead.
Yeah, we did, we did meet. We kind of reviewed some program updates, changes, both to menu offerings, expansion of the à la carte program at the high school, to students in the ice block in the cafeteria, grabbing go breakfast program that they started beginning of the month. The program's going to receive, be reviewed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education in December. It's a programmatic review, so they'll be testing compliance issues related to nutrition standards and eligibility for free reduced meals, verification process, and so on. The, I think the other important piece would be that we, one, will be looking at our wellness policy in the near future and looking to update that. And the other piece would be the contract with our current service provider expires at the end of this year. So we will be going out to bid probably sometime after the first of the year. So a committee would be put together to review the bids and make a recommendation for award of a contract to the school committee sometime. I'd say in early spring, we try to have it awarded sometime in April to, in case there's a change of our service provider for the transition to take place. But so those are the highlights. We have a tentative date in January.
January 23rd.
Yes, which is confirmed as a matter of fact, but I'll let the members know. So-
Okay. And, and if anyone here is interested in joining the Food Service Committee for any of the things that are coming up, the wellness policy revision and-
Wellness policy. What is wellness policy? And just in quick, general.
We can play a hot potato with this.
Food is concerned, like nutrition?
Yeah, nutrition, movement, exercise, all of the recommendations are kind of compiled into a policy that, that staff can follow.
nutritional education.
Educational, right. So we'll, a small group will be reviewing that. But, you know, if you're volunteering, I'll be happy to, please let me know. Give you a ring.
Did you hear that?
The hard work was done on it several years ago. And it's really a matter of updating it to make sure it's consistent with new regs. So.
I would say members of the public too. If anybody out there watching would like to join, please feel free to contact us and let us know.
Absolutely. Yes, you can email, or Tom, wherever. Our emails are on the website. So, and again, if anyone at the table here is interested in, in joining in the efforts, please let me know. Okay. So ongoing business, we have none. We did our new business. And so now we will move into executive session. I need a motion to move it into executive session. It's on our, there's a recommended motion on our agenda.
I want me to read it?
That?
I move that the school committee adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing strategy as it relates to collective bargaining with Unit A, and to consider the release of executive session minutes from previous meeting, according to general law, Chapter 30A, Section 22G, not to reconvene into open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
And we need a roll call vote, starting with Karen.
Karen Moore, an aye.
Melanie Rothstein, aye.
Michelle Grabzki, aye.
Melissa Dupre, aye.
Stephanie Jasmine, aye.
Beth Baer, an aye.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much to everyone in the audience and listening. And we'll see you again.